Does anyone have an extra?
I should.
But I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
We are very ready?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order. The date is November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is our City Commission regular meeting as well as our CRA meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening. I'm going to ask if you would, Commissioner Moore, if you would leave us in the invitation and then the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are.
This is Fatherhead. Dear Heavenly Father, once again we are here. And Lord, we ask that you look upon us tonight. We ask that you continue to give us grace and mercy, to do not bless at will. We ask that you be with us and help us to make those decisions that are good for everyone. Help us to be grateful and help us to do be honest and do those things that would be pleasing in your sight. The Father God, we ask that you look upon everyone that's here on today. Have mercy upon us. Give us grace and give us peace. We will forever praise your name. All these blessings we act in the Son of Jesus.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance to God. And to my statements. As we were called by the holy standing. One nation under God. In the gospel, for the liberty and justice of all. Thank you, everyone. And with that, Lord, I'm going to ask if you please do a roll call for us.
Commissioner Lisa De Vito.
Present.
Commissioner William Laurie.
Present.
Commissioner Linda Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Cynthia Burton.
Here.
City Manager Derek Martin.
Here.
City Attorney Dawn Holmes.
Here.
Crescent City Fire Chief Chair Razor.
Here.
Peppin County Sheriff's Office Major David Usery.
Here.
Finance Director Steve Conklin.
Here.
And Mayor Myers, Michelle.
I am present. Thank you, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We have quite a few announcements tonight. I guess it's the holiday season. So let me start off with the Crescent City Library is having a birthday party. And I don't know if you've been in the library since they remodeled, but you definitely should stop in. It's Saturday, November fifteenth, from nine to twelve thirty. They're having a presentation by the Jacksonville Zoo and Botanical Gardens. And it's hosted by the Crescent City Library Board. Again, that's November fifteenth. The Crescent City Women's Club is going to have a bonko. Again, that's November nineteenth. They're doing this every third Wednesday from one to three. The cost is six dollars. Snacks and drinks will be available for a minimal charge. And then we've got the Fall Speaker Series for the Brooklyn Peninsula Historical Society. And this time, the speaker is going to be Tommy Burr. And he has rare finds, a global bottle collector. It's going to be November twentieth at four P M., and that is at the Women's Club. They use that facility. He is a sixth generation native of Crescent City. I think it's Crescent City. He retired after twenty-two years from the U.S. Coast Guard and then returned to Crescent City where he worked seventeen years in Forest Road Furnery. He's an avid bottle collector and he's going to talk about that. Bob Lee will be the one to interview Tommy about his bottle collecting. You don't want to miss that. Crescent City Women's Club is doing their bingo. They do this the third Friday of every month. It's twenty dollars for dinner and bingo. Don't be late. Door opens at five o'clock. Bingo starts at five forty-five. The jackpot payout is fifty dollars. You must be eighteen years of age to participate. And then we've got our Christmas lot. And I don't know if any of you remember from last year, but the Church of the Holy Comforter, Episcopal Church, right here by the fire station, they did the beautiful Christmas lot last year. And they're going to open it up this year starting November twenty-third. They'll have fresh cut Fraser fir, Christmas trees, and gift baskets. And then we've got our extension agent, Julio Perez. And he is going to, with our monthly program on gardening, he will be here November twenty-sixth at the Crescent City Public Library. And it's a free monthly gardening workshop on square foot gardening. Learn how to grow more vegetables in less space. This is for beginners and seasoned gardens alike. And then everyone's invited to card making class. And this is at Howl Memorial United Methodist, and that's December second, starting at six thirty. There is a twenty-five dollar charge and you must register to ensure that you have enough supplies. We've got the numbers if anybody needs that. It is at six thirty. And then the First Presbyterian Church, we're moving into December. This is December sixth, Saturday, from nine to two. They're doing their annual Silver Tea Christmas Bazaar. Make sure you stop in. They have a lot of baked goods, Christmas decorations, and handmade crafts. It's going to be again from nine to two. And it's in the Warner Fellowship Hall of the Presbyterian Church. Piano music will be provided by Dee Gouldsky and Mike Simmons. And then that same day, it's going to be a big day here in Crescent City. Starting at noon is going to be our at noon is going to be our Crescent City Holiday Parade. And that starts at South State Bank. We're going to line up down Magnolia. Please, if it's a local business, local organization, school groups, church groups, nonprofits, anybody, please make sure to reach out to us. And we'd love to have you in the parade. And also, starting at twelve o'clock, is the Holiday Market, which is brought to us by our Crescent City Downtown Partnership. That's going to start in Eagle Lion Park at noon. They will have vendors, there will be food booths, and it's going to go until seven P M. And then at five that evening, we're going to have the Light Up Crescent City. There'll be live holiday music, holiday dance recital, and tree lighting. They'll be offering free cookies and hot cocoa. And I am pleased to announce that all the trees have lights in them. We still have to work on the trunks, but the trees all have lights in them. So we will be ready to go that evening. And then Howl Memorial is having their Christmas Bazaar Flea Market. I'm telling you, it's a busy time of the year, Friday and Saturday, December twelfth and thirteen, from eight to two o'clock. And there is going to be a breakfast at eight A M. to eleven o'clock, lunch from eleven to two. Reserve your space. It's a ten by ten space. You can contact Frank Murray. They've also are having their Old Fashioned Christmas Caroling, December twelfth, from two thousand and twenty five at seven P M. They'll meet in the church parking lot. There'll be light refreshments served afterwards. They're going to, I believe, up and down that area, they will be doing their Christmas Caroling. And then they had the, I think that's the same thing, Old Fashioned Christmas Caroling. It's the same. And then Pastor Mobbs is going to talk to us a little bit, I think, tonight. He is also doing Christmas Caroling. And that's going to be December fifth, which is a Friday, the Friday before the light up. They'll be meeting in Eagle Lion Park. So we have a lot going on. I am pleased to announce also, for those of you who aren't aware, we had our first annual Bike Festival here in Crescent City, two weeks ago, about two weeks ago. It was big accolades to Anna from Free Bananas. She is the E D. Chair for the Downtown Crescent City Partnership. And she really spearheaded this, along with a lot of volunteers. Pablo, he is in the audience. He helped out. Our school band was there. They performed. It was an incredible day. Rachel did all of the printing for it. It took a lot of hard work, but we were told that based on the estimates, we had, what was it, probably over two thousand bikes that were here in Crescent City with over four thousand people, probably upwards to about forty-five hundred people in Crescent City. And it was a beautiful day. I am pleased to also share, thank you to our Sheriff's Office, that with all of that activity, all of those people, there was not one incident. There was not one incident. So I'm very proud of this city and commissioners, I know you are as well, and for the people in our city, our residents, and those that visited our city, they took special care of everything that day. So thank you, big shout out to all those volunteers. There's so many others, we can't name them all. And as far as the lights, I do want to thank Lisa Roddenberry. She has been by my side the entire way. She's usually there before I even show up. We have Cheryl Galvitz has been out there. Liz has been out there. Patsy has been out there. And of course Cecil has been out there. And our staff has been out there helping. And so it's been a labor of love, but it's coming together. So thank you. Commissioners, do you have any announcements that we have? Anybody have any announcements? Okay, one, two. Thank you so much. Okay.
I would just like to say that Bike Festival was amazing. It was really cool to see so many people come to town. It was such a beautiful day and everyone really seemed like they were having a great time. And I know, I think all of us were out there at one point or another except for Commissioner De Vito who was out the country. But it was a beautiful day. And some of the pictures were really great, they were online. It really made our town look great.
It really, I have to say, yes. We walked around very, felt very proud, very proud that day of our city and all of our volunteers. And because, believe me, it took a lot to put that on. And the businesses that came together, like I said, Pablo with Parker House, he was a big help. Free Bananas, our restaurants. And that's one of the big things with having these events is we're trying to expose the community to what we offer here. And the restaurants were packed that day. Could not, had a hard time keeping up with the demand, which is great for them as well. So with that, if we have no other announcements, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to go into approval of the minutes. We've got October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Workshop Fire Station. I believe that Commissioner De Vito had sent out a few changes on this.
Yes, I did. So those were distributed.
Did everybody have a chance to look at those by chance?
Okay. So would you like me to just quickly go through those, ma'am?
You can.
Because there was, I think, a couple things. I had a question about, I had I had sent some questions last Monday to the city manager for things I wasn't sure about, but anyway. And I have to say, these are very well organized and very easy to read.
Very well done, very well done.
But there are some things that I think need either corrected or added. Under item number five, it's a hint, number of pages, under proclamation and evidence, it's my recollection that the revisions presented to the memorial proclamation were both from me and Commissioner Laurie, if that's okay with Commissioner Laurie.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to add Commissioner Laurie, or is it Commissioner De Vito and Commissioner Laurie?
Yes. So I think we had pretty much the same ones in mind.
Okay.
Down number six, on the same page, under Workshop Discussion, Fire Department Expansion Project. This is somewhat optional, but in the third line, it talks about the initial million dollars. It might be helpful. I'm sure we mentioned it somewhere to say what year that was. And then the fourth line, Lauren Tingle. I think we mentioned that she was with the, whatever the name is now, but the Florida Department of Banking and Insurance.
Yes.
Right, and I think that's important because that's, we talked about it, and that's more specific. She's not the only grant specialist. On the next page, at the very bottom, under Current Site Considerations, the very first line, the word Eucalyptus, obviously that should capitalize.
It should.
Yes, it should. Commissioner Laurie is correct. Because it runs eastwards, right? Okay, so bottom of page three, capitalized Eucalyptus and substitute avenue for street. Very next page, down towards the bottom, where the heading is Timeline and Next Steps. On the second line, it says Key Deadline of January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven to execute the grant agreement. I would insert there, because we talked about this and it's a key requirement, the city must be able to demonstrate site ownership to execute the agreement. And that, that's an, you know, important point for future reference. Ready for next page, ma'am? Okay. So the next page, which is the last page, under Commission Direction, says a follow-up workshop was scheduled. I think we requested it. We did not have a date. And I wrote at the end of that sentence, when the city manager has sufficient information available. But I think the most important thing is to say requested as opposed to scheduled, because we didn't schedule it. And then under number seven, the Dixie update, the second paragraph, I believe that that was Commissioner Laurie, not Commissioner Burton, suggesting organizing a community forum. Since, because I don't even know if they checked, okay. Because I think Commissioner Burton may have asked not to be present for that part. And then that same paragraph, the next to the last line, says Chamberlain President Laura, I believe her last name is Papless, P A B L U S. Okay, and then under number eight, the workshop was adjourned approximately two fifty-five. The commission scheduled to reconvene at three thirty P M. And I just added for a special meeting, not for the same workshop. And that was what I had for the fire station workshop.
Yeah, I think, I think we just removed the, we just permissioned to reconvene, because we weren't, we weren't reessessing that and reviewing.
Right, so just strike them all.
Yeah, just strike them all. That calls off the, trying to acknowledge a period.
All right, so instead of adding anything, just a period after two fifty-five P M. And that's very accurate and more brief.
Okay, let's move on to, if we can, to October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. That's a special meeting by the city commission?
Yes. So on the first page, my suggestion would be, since it was a city commission meeting, that the commissioners should be listed first under the roll call, since word one's needed for the forum. Then under the list of staff present, I think the word processing, it should be Kate Harris.
And not Kate Harris?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, electronic word processing. Anyway.
So that would be just that.
Okay. I'm going to call Kate now.
So, okay.
But no future issue, I'm not.
That's a good suggestion. We'll have to go along and give it a try. Okay. The next page, number five, purpose of meeting.
Can I add something before that?
Yes.
The mission would not televise. It said, explain that it was a request of the meeting not be televised despite our not advertising that it would be. And that actually was a change, right?
I had, I put that in my, in my changes as well.
And it was advertised that it would not be streamed.
Yeah.
That would not be taking place and not live in an alien person. Like it says at the top of our agenda list, that very interesting.
Yeah.
Yes, I remember that. So just not would have to be added and there would not be streaming.
Yeah.
Okay, no, it's me.
Okay. Purpose of meeting, I believe this was a special meeting specifically called by the mayor. So after Mayor Myers stated, I added that she called the special meeting. And then deleted was called after that, just to make it clear that it was a special meeting caused by the mayor. And then in the second line, I think the word discomfort is not really the right word, dissatisfaction seems more accurate. The topic was staff dissatisfaction. I just think that's more accurate. Again, very easy to read minutes. Under number eight, Staff Statements. I don't know that there's any better way to say this or do it, but under item B., the Assistant City Manager, CRA Manager, the first bullet, says citing unprofessional conduct during meetings. I really didn't under, I don't remember.
About the staff meetings.
Oh, during staff meetings. Oh, there you go. Thank you. So just after the word during, insert the word staff.
And it also says that she read a prepared statement, I wish it did not. Unless you could read it without, you know.
I know she had that, but I'm not sure.
I just called her, I contacted her.
Yeah.
Well, she seemed well organized. I don't think it's horribly inaccurate.
I'm fine with how it reads.
I am as well. Let's see. I think that's all I had for that page. Oh, and on the next page, that would be page four, under item ten, Commissioner Mayor remarks. I think both, there are three bullets with comments from Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Laurie, and Mayor Myers. I think Commissioner Laurie had something to say, I remember specifically, and I wrote this to be added, that I thanked Christine Marie for her contributions and I wish her well in the future. I would like for that to be added, because I distinctly remember saying that.
Right, and that's.
Matt, third, can we capture their statements, if there was one? Thank you.
That's pretty close. And, oh, yeah. So something, then on the next page, under twelve additional discussion, the very last paragraph that starts, she also mentioned the recent loss of Ronnie Grant. I think it would be more clear to say resignation.
Yeah, we just read so many.
And just that that could be taken differently. And then after key employee, I inserted Public Works Department. That's not necessary, but it's more clear. Then number thirteen, under discussion, city hall step up repairs. The second paragraph, it says Catherine Malard added context. I'm pretty sure that was my comment, don't you? Because I'm the one with the step up house. Okay, and that was what I had for that was the special meeting.
Okay, that's the new one. Does anybody have any other changes to this?
Mayor, do you have, do you have changes?
Not that one. I have all my change, all the changes that I had were taken care of.
Okay, and somewhere, we have one more meeting, right?
We have the October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, here we go. Again, same super organization, under Pledgeable Allegiance. I think you could just say the mayor led the Pledgeable Allegiance at a prior workshop. I think the commission made the request that we not have that phrase was recited by all present for reasons that we discussed them, not being necessary. So I would delete was recited by all president, just present instead of mayor led.
We don't, honestly, we don't even have to have anything, just Pledgeable Allegiance.
Yeah.
I mean, that speaks for itself, because it's Pledgeable Allegiance.
Okay, that's fine with me. I don't know.
Sometimes I don't, sometimes someone else a little faster than I am, so.
That's true, that's true. Okay, under Roll Call, I don't know, I think it's adequate to say the clerk. And that sentence, I think you could strike everything after the word's Roll Call. And just say, the court conducted roll call and it shows who was present and who was not. And then at the end of that paragraph, absent, Kate Harris's last name is missing.
Unlike the way it is where it says present and absent, just so it.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, you just say roll call and then it shows who's present and absent. I wasn't suggesting that I changed that, I just delete with the following members present.
Okay.
Because we're not all members of the same group. Announcements, there we go. Under announcements, the last paragraph, it says additional announcements were provided by Commissioner De Vito. I took out my name and just put others, because I don't think I was the only one with some of those announcements. That's, that's what I thought, so is that okay just to put?
And Liz did the library, Liz or Nancy did the library in quick time. Okay, that's fine, just cross that out, put that there, there's one.
Okay, because I did not have the markings on announcements.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Comment.
You got the wrong part.
I'm wrong, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
The first part and the second part.
I did not touch that, yeah. No?
Eagle Lion.
Right, okay, so you're saying in the second line, take out Johnson Over Turf Park, because we don't have this part. It's in front of the finger long empty, Eagle Lion, yeah.
And not in the motion, it was actually Commissioner Laurie.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness. Right, so under the motion, Eagle Lion, not Johnson Over Turf. And I don't know if there was a date mentioned. I have no idea. Just that Sunday, I guess it was the Sunday following the meeting.
Yeah, so that's, that's where, that's when it was, so.
Okay. And I did not have anything else on that page.
Is it exchange students on the page?
No, they're on the next, on the next page. Okay, there are number five, exchanged students were in ignition. One student has the last name, the other does not. I don't know if that's available.
Yes, I have the list somewhere. It's not, I think he introduced it, his name was difficult, so I think that's why he went with Alex.
I was going to say, he's, right, yeah. He's from Romania, so that would not be easy.
They have their first Halloween here and they were very excited about it.
Yeah, that was a nice town, that's fine. Number six, Sheriff's Report, the very last paragraph. Yeah, that was nice to happen, that, that's fine. Um, number six, sheriffs report, the very last paragraph, um, has error in Major Essery's last name, should be a U, uh, to start, not a E. Um, then the next page, under CRA status updates, um, in the second paragraph, the lock site is spelled with a K, it should be an H, L O C H. And it says brewing project, it's the lock site and restaurant.
Now, I've already gotten some comments wondering if we're putting a brewery in, brewery going into town.
Oh, wow, okay, I, I think it's the lock site and restaurant, will we rewrite about that? Okay, um, and then, um, the paragraph that immediately follows, the CRA board recessed, don't we adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay, so I replaced recessed with adjourned, um. And then, so under business items, um, we had the motion to approve the special event application. Um, and actually, it just occurs to me, was that the downtown partnership asking for that event to be approved?
They were asking for the holiday market, they asked for the holiday market, the city's doing the Christmas parade and they're doing the holiday.
No, I'm still up on the agenda.
Uh, that was the downtown, yes.
Okay, cause actually, it doesn't say who asked for that.
Okay.
Somewhere it should say downtown partnership. Um, and then, if we could add somewhere in there, I don't think I was the only one. Um, I know I requested coordination with residents for access to their homes and I think that was mentioned by others. Mayor, did you not speak to that also?
Um, they just talked to him, I think Tim said that he was going to make sure that he had reached out to them.
Okay, so can we just say it was agreed, um, to coordinate with residents for access to their homes?
Yes.
Okay, it was agreed to coordinate with residents for access to their homes, okay, cause we did talk about that, it's important. Um, then down under C, Christmas parade and holiday market, um, Christmas parade scheduled for December sixth at noon, um, that instead of sunset park, it should be South State Bank parking lot, I think that's the machine picking it up. And then not evil lion, but evil lion, and also holiday market, it's got, it should be evil lion. Um, and then, when I looked at this, I realized, um, also, when we had a commission meeting on approval of a number of minutes, um, we specifically asked for motions to be stated as they were said and also separately. This section here combines two motions, the motion for the parade and holiday market, and they're very separate things. I wrote it out, should be separate motions, also reflect the event sponsor and who was requesting. Cause it's my understanding the city is sponsoring the parade, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, and the mayor to organize with Marion Bradley of Crescent City Rotary. And then, second, the holiday market, that was a permit request, um, from the downtown partnership. So the motion was to approve the permit request. Um, so.
Braddock, correct?
Braddock, yes.
Braddock?
Yes.
Not Bradley?
But, no, I'm sorry, I went to school with Marion Bradley, sorry about that, long time ago. Okay, uh, that was all I had for that page. Um, under number ten, staff reports. I.
Does anybody have anything for the following page, um, with nine and in? With nine, does anybody have anything with nine, nine, okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, um, under B, F D P consent order, and this is something I had a question about. The city manager said the options that might be available to us. Um, did we have state any kind of consensus or vote on what the preferred option was?
No.
We did not, okay, alright, maybe we just talked about it. Then also on that same page, um, very last item D, it says Newman, not launch, it should be lodge. Um, and I suggested putting in the address, that's one oh seven North Main Street, but that's not completely necessary. But it definitely should be Newman Lodge, that was all I had for that page. So, under city manager report, second paragraph, um, Mayor, this was your item, so if you're happy with it, that's fine with me, but you said it says noted financial review items and I took out financial review and said items of concern in the latest income and expenditure statement.
That's fine.
Okay, and, I don't know, I added something about the three hundred, um, library funds, but I think we can cross that out, that's not really necessary, you just highlighted what it was, unless it was your item. Um, also, my question is, um, I believe we had a city attorney update and I don't see anything mentioned in the minutes about that, but I believe we had a city attorney update. Did we not?
Really?
Okay. Um, so that should be mentioned, well, I believe it was the update about the employee complaint, that is my recollection. And then I noticed under adjournment, it says the meeting adjourned at approximately ten thirty P M. Um, but I don't see, didn't, wouldn't we have had a motion to extend the meeting?
We would have, and I have that too, but, um, I, I think it was nine thirty, it just probably felt like ten thirty to them.
Right, oh, so we adjourned.
A I, yes.
Did we adjourn at nine thirty?
I believe we did.
Okay, well, alright, okay, so in, in other words, just correct the time of adjournment?
Yep, yep. Okay, is that it? Does anybody else have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a, a motion, please.
I will, that'd be approved the three sets of minutes with the corrections mentioned. Like, so the October seventh workshop meeting, the October seventh special meeting, and October ninth, regular meeting.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a proper motion in a second, commissioners all in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed, nay? Okay, so moved, kind of proved. Now we're gonna move on to our public comments section. This is on topics that are not already listed on the agenda. Um, they'll be heard at this time. Please come forward, state your name and your address, if you will, you have three minutes.
I'm just gonna be driving. Nancy Taylor, sixteen month summit, uh, we had our book sale the same weekend as the Black Fest and it was very successful. But, um, what I wanted to say is that we have a new flag, and a new light on top of the flagpole, so it doesn't have to be broadened every day, it can stay out at night. And our lampposts have already been repainted with new globes and new lights and they're lighting up the parking lot, they're really pretty, so if you go by at night, check out our new lamps.
Thank you, that's awesome.
A lot of your shirt, by the way.
That's awesome, thank you. Do we have any other comments, any other public comments, please come forward, yes, chief?
Sure, raise your flag, chief, uh, Chief Sanford. Uh, just wanted to address a couple of concerns, um, I know rumor gets around towns and places. Your fire department has dealt with some pretty significant calls over the past couple of weeks. Excuse me, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we have made arrangements for them to get mental health. We're giving buddy systems, we rotated some staff around and checked on everybody. So at the current moment, everybody's okay, but I've been getting asks, I just wanted to clarify that we are working with guys, everybody's in good shape. Um, but just keep in mind, that's a, that's a day in the fire service and we deal with some stuff that a lot of people don't quite understand, so. But, um, currently, the fire department's in good shape, if anybody has any other questions about that, please reach out to me, I'm secure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. We did have a few losses last week. It's sad, so, thank you for making sure that they're taken care of. Do we have any other, any other comments? Seeing nobody else come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna close out our public comments section. And we're gonna open it up to the sheriff's office, Major Essery.
Mayor, commission, good evening.
Good evening.
So I'll get to our court pretty quick, I just, first of all, I wanna say to everybody that's out there watching on, uh, social media now, my guys, uh, had a blast over these last couple of events you guys had, they were sending me pictures over the weekend and the community really made them feel at home. And to the, the commission, we appreciate the, uh, effort that you have put into these events. And also to everybody that's out there watching today, thank you so much for taking care of our guys. It's, uh, some sad times, some places we're in and out, and to have that type of support, it, it goes, you know, it goes along with us, so we thank you for that. Moving on.
I did, I do wanna say before you get started, and I apologize that I did not, the Trump retreat was outstanding.
Oh, yes, I forgot about that, yeah.
I know, and you were there this year.
Yes, yes.
You were there this year, and again, without incident, um, and there were children everywhere and adults and it was, uh, a fun time as always, and thank you to you, your staff, sheriff, everybody.
I'm totally, she does a fantastic job of that stuff, so, so she's working with you now for the, uh, the parade coming up, we're way ahead of time for the parade coming up, so. We're all looking forward to it, it's already been fully stashed, so we're just ready for you to give you the thumbs up and we'll make everything happen.
Did we get a count or an idea of how many kids were there? Cause I mean, I just saw partners coming and coming.
She said, when I asked her at the end of the evening, Holly said she thought there was maybe two thousand. Uh, last year we had like about fifteen hundred. I felt like we were a little down, we were down this year, um, the homes were down this year. Um, you can always, Herman and Gail had five hundred packets that they gave out.
I know, I sat there for days and watched Holly, but she had to take her time doing it, but you seen, if you seen those little bags that she had, those little Ziploc bags, she done every one of those by herself, she was sitting there for three times while she was doing other things on the phone with people and she's sitting there bagging, can't handle it, I don't know how you do it, she got to be a second.
Yeah, and that's how, and that's how she keeps count, i- is how many baggies, that she gives, how many baggies she's handing out. Um, but, uh, you know, there were, I, I, we don't know how many children and it went right till eight o'clock and I'll tell you, at eight o'clock, it shut down, I mean, it was amazing, we had no more after that, so.
If I were thirty-five minutes where it says, I mean, baggies you're handing out.
I was thinking about that, about the baggie thing, though, yeah, so, anyway, go ahead.
So we got a burglary, it was kind of an interesting one, uh, at forty-five Citron, this house is kind of in and out, but I say abandoned, the property, I haven't been there in some time, they came and found some kind of weird, I don't know, it was missing. Uh, we had someone, two or suspects in this, it's kind of weird how this all unfolded, but basically somebody was breaking into the house, they seen him coming out the window, so they seen him coming out the window, so they said, well, we'll go in there too. We interviewed him, he obviously denies it, he's a local around here, we ended up getting on, on some different charges later on, it was discussed. And we had charged two juveniles with going to home meetings and consuming lines, so. On the traffic activity, nothing really significant, everything was mostly in parking lots, backing up in the vehicle, very minor stuff. All the, uh, traffic crash report, what we call short forms, so basically the way that works is if it's under a certain amount of damage or no injury, we don't, we do a short, basically, and change the information and let the people handle it with their insurance company, so really nothing that, uh, two trucks, which is a good thing. Moving to some of the data, the meat potatoes, if you wanna see, two hundred and fifty-six calls for service, seventy-two hundred traffic stops, five traffic accidents. Again, they were all in parking lots. Fourteen actual incident reports, seven arrests, and two, uh, charging at Davis reported, said attorney helped us. That was on just two, uh, juveniles, who were being in the house in the Citron. We had one burglary, little guy, so staying even, no more crime because of the city. And that's all I have.
Okay, do we, listeners, does anybody have a question or for Major Essery? Everybody good?
It was a good one, well, thank you.
That's a good night.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for all you do and, and your staff.
You're welcome, and I'm looking forward to the parade coming up, that's always fun, so, should there be more?
We'll make sure we get all those pens. Okay, with that, we're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna, at this time, I'm gonna recess our regular scheduled meeting and I'm gonna open up our CRA meeting. Um, and we have a special guest with us tonight.
Yes, we do, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Edward, if you could come up and, and talk to the commission, we'd love to meet you, hear about your story, and then we'll get down to business.
Good evening, I'm, uh, I don't know, I wasn't expecting that, sorry, you couldn't hear that. Uh, I'm delighted to be here, I'm delighted to see, we should be opening for David, so that I can get to him.
Um, Edward and his son Christopher are, they are the, um, proprietors of Lockside. And they have put their heart and soul into this and we're at the, we're at the final stretch.
So, please, would you go say you done, and then just take it up and say, hey.
Um, and he did bring for all of us, I have to share on my note.
Oh.
I wondered about that, yes, got his shortbread from Scotland, and so I'll think about that as we go into the meeting. No, like, shortbread, everybody loves shortbread, so that's for everybody, so thank you. Do you wanna talk to us a little bit?
Yes.
Derek, about this?
Thank you, so, knowing that, uh, they had some issues and difficulties with the state and they were finally moving forward past those problems and issues, uh, with St. John's River Water Management, and we approved the plans. Um, just recently, I had reached out to Chris, his son, and, uh, and Mr. Edward showed up at the office out of the blue and I was like, this is a great opportunity, and we had a great conversation. Um, the reason for myself to, to reach out was to get an updated quote, um, because their paving contract, which was approved last year, had been about a year old now. Um, so we needed an updated, uh, permit for the grant, and of course, if the cost was going to increase, I need to include that and have that for you all. The original grant was for the asphalt work, uh, in front of the parking lot, of course, to thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, that cost has now increased, uh, to forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars and I believe that also is a match, uh, that you're gonna be paying as well. Um, there was another quote that was a little bit less, but Mr. Edward, if you could speak to that, just real quickly, um, summarize why the increase?
Hello, we're speaking with the contractor, he, he said that we could do the pay work to some of the patches and cover it up, but it would come through. If you went with the other contract, you know, the newer contract, it'd be a whole new parking lot that they have to fix.
Okay, so everybody not to deal with that.
Awesome. We may not take it with me to brand new.
Resurfacing, that's.
Yeah, brand new, yes, versus patchwork and other, other work, so. I am requesting after review and approval to move forward with this and allow them to start the work, uh, and, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but he has the contractor lined up and can start getting the paving parking lot completed next week. And as you heard, uh, February is the time that they're looking at opening.
Commissioners, do we have, um, is there any questions that you have?
Uh, I do, Mayor, I actually have a couple of questions.
So, then you've all got, you should have these quotes, I'm sorry.
Right, so these, these are in front of us, okay, that was the old quote, so we're only being asked to fund one grand, okay, one, okay, thank you, I didn't see.
Yes.
So it's old and new, so that is what we appre- we approve this.
Okay, so. Okay, I, I got it.
Previously.
So, so basically, we're being asked to approve an updated, a match, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and as I understand it, the forty-seven thousand dollars, that's our share and because the total cost, I believe, is almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Ninety-four thousand, eight hundred.
Ninety-four thousand, eight hundred.
Okay, so.
And a fifty-fifty split in this grant.
Right, okay, so that's our share and this is coming out of the North CRA, right?
The North CRA redevelopment portion of the, of the budget, yes, ma'am.
Right, and that, uh, the last time I looked, I don't have it in front of me, um, do we know what the total amount in the North CRA?
In that line item specific was around or a little bit above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, we're carrying a lot, so.
Yes, that's our, our, that's one, and are we anticipating any more great requests for this, um, project?
For this particular, particular project, at this time, no, ma'am.
Okay.
And this F line?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, well, great news, um, that's all, those are all my questions. Well, I do have one more question, so this is gonna be complete asphalt paving, there's not gonna be any impervious, um, surface, I mean, not impervious, sorry, thank you, Commissioner Laurie, no pervious surface in this parking lot?
And I will speak to that, we also have Mark Corret here. And I will speak to that, we also have Mark Corret here, who can speak a little bit, he's seen the design, we just finished working on those landscaping and parking lot design, but I would say that the existing impervious area is going to be replaced and kind with asphalt paving to bring it up to speed, and take out the bad, bad concrete, bad parking lot, so. I wouldn't imagine an increase in impervious surface area, because they would not have the, the grace that they have from St. John's River Water Management District, so.
So there's the point.
They're gonna maintain the footprint that's there right now.
Okay, thank you.
And is that correct, Mark, to your recollection?
It's substantially correct, thank you very much.
Okay, we have any other questions? No questions, okay, commissioners?
I, I knew that we approve the CRA grant for the forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars, represents fifty percent of the paving project for the Lockside Leisure LLC from the North CRA grant fund.
And I'll second that.
Okay, can you possibly add that, since we've already previously approved this, updated, this the updated quote?
So, it's an updated quote, so, yes, reauthorization, I guess.
So, so originally, it was thirty-four, two, and we are now giving them a little more money.
Right, I, I think, so Commissioner Roy, I'm sorry. Mayor, ma'am? Yes, Commissioner Roy, I like the use of the word of reauthorization of the grant, for an increased amount.
I'll add, it's a, you're trying to start, I knew that we reauthorized the grant to the Lockside Leisure LLC for a increased cost of forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars, which represents fifty percent of paving project income that the facility at one, one two two North Summit Street, and one two fours, yeah.
Okay, and commissioners, we go your first, or second?
Yes, the last second, that.
So commissioners, we have a quoth motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? If not, I will open it up, public comment, if anybody has any comments.
Can't wait to see it done.
Believe me, it's a good one.
So, nobody, no public comment for this, I'll close public comment then, and Madam Clark, if you would please do a roll call for us.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito's?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Okay, so approved, and again, we thank you for the investment that you're making here in Crescent City, and what you've added to that area. Thank you so much, I know it's a labor of love for both of you, and we look forward to you being here in February, opening up. Okay, with that, do we have any other CRA business that, that we need to discuss at this time?
Um, I, ma'am, if I could, I have a question for the city manager, but I could hold out for the city manager's report.
Is it regarding CRA?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Watson, CRA.
Uh, I guess I need to wait until I have the, the city manager's out of conference.
Sorry.
That's okay, Commissioner DeVito has a question for you, you're talking about CRA issue.
Oh, actually, I have two, they're related.
Yes, you have two.
So, at a recent meeting, we approved a CRA grant for the laundromat car wash, and I've had some comments about that. As to one of the colors that's being used, it seems to be, well, I don't know.
Yellow is a very difficult color.
Banana.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, we had some discussion about this not being necessarily a targeted property. It had been identified in a historical survey as mid-century modern. All I can say is that somehow, I think going forward in the future, if we're gonna be paying for these things, maybe we need to spend a little more time, and this is really a comment not so much for the city manager, but for my fellow commissioners and the city manager. Maybe we need to spend a little more time talking about what the final product is going to be, because we're putting the money in. I mean, I'm very pleased that it's getting pressure washed, it's a wonderful business, it's been there for a long time, it does great things for our community, I heard they now have Wi-Fi, all that's wonderful, but I just think when we're putting investment in, we need to, you know, drill down a little bit more into the detail.
Well, if you'll look at those estimates, it was for white and blue.
What happened?
Yeah, well, the other thing, I, I mean, I agree, but I think it really has to be stated when we make these, this, this has to kind of go with, you know, what the city kind of looks like.
And talking to the city manager about this, because when I was running by the other day, I stopped and said, "Um, did you get that right?" And he said, "Yeah, we got it right," and I said, "Oh, okay." That we have a color palette, that we do. Well, I know we do, but we need actual color chip palette so that they can have something to, to choose from, but that did say blue and white, they wanted a different color, and it's my understanding, I think that they even, the painter said to me that they paid the difference because the white wasn't much easier because it was already white. The prep work they had to do on that building was pretty significant. And I don't know if that awning, that awning is the old awning, historical, it's been there, right?
Well, they replaced the bottom of that awning just recently, they rebuilt it, and so.
So, yes, I mentioned to him that possibly, if they were to paint that, the color of the trim, that that might cut it a little bit. But they didn't want, they did, that's not what they, what they wanted, so.
Well, and that, that comes down to the, the other thing, you mentioned the color palette, is that just, is that a structure in the historic district? We don't know, anyway, because I know in the historic district, we did have a listing of colors, but anyway, regardless, the, the city is contributing CRA, CRA money to that, and I just, I see the look on his face, I just think we need to make sure that we're all, we get it right. And then I did get a comment from a resident who was very concerned, and this is an environmental issue, about the, with the prep work, that there were paint chips all over that were not corralled or whatever, and, you know, I think everything in our storm drains pretty much goes out to the lakes. And it hasn't rained lately, but I don't know, for, for future projects as well, if we can make sure that they're, when they're doing prep work, that they're not gonna be putting materials like that down the drains. And even for this one, if the city manager maybe could go check on that, make sure it's not on the sidewalk and the pavement.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that was a, that was a concern I had about that, and then I did, do we have a date, what is the status, do we currently have a CRA manager? Like, is.
Currently, we do not, and I'm the executive director of the CRA, so I'm handling the work right now, I am proposing a call.
I thought she was only.
She's only.
She hasn't resigned.
Correct.
She's only, so we have a CRA manager, she's only, right?
Technically, yes, she's just not here at this point, in time.
Because my feeling is, there's, there's quite a lot of work to be done in the CRA, and I know at the last meeting, I had asked if we could get updates on just the status of business activity in the CRA, and we still have quite a few vacant buildings. In fact, I mean, I remember the Main Street application had an analysis of the downtown, and it including, and this is important, probably for Commissioner Moore to know, because she wasn't here. The Main Street application had an analysis of the vacancy rate, both for first floor and second floor, I don't think it's changed very much. So my hope would be that, well, that we have CRA manager as soon as possible, and as well, I think it'd be a good idea for the commission to take this up at a future meeting, just to look at the status of our business district and vacancy.
Well, again, we still have a current CRA manager, she's only.
So, saying, yes.
I just want to make sure that we, for the record, we have that, because she did ask to take some, some, um, extended, yes. She came back a little before, she probably should have, and so she's trying to, we can.
Okay, so, just for our purposes, as a commission, I think it'd be helpful for us to see where we are, and maybe the kind of steps that we need to take. Because our vacancy rates, that's not good, and, you know, the buck stops with us, so that.
Yeah, not, a lot of that has to do too with people, and they're willing to do something with those vacant buildings.
Right, but it's, that is part of, that's part of planning, that's part of why we have a CRA, I think that's worthy of a conversation.
And I will say that throughout her time here, that Christina has made a young man's effort to reach out, and she is on a, on a, to talk to all those vacant buildings, and encourage them to do something with them, and she does that on a regular basis, I do know that for a fact, and some of them are just unwilling, and. My understanding with the building down at the end, which she has talked to them also, that is, I'll excel it in, that while somebody, I guess, went into it, or, it's for sale right now, kind of, they put it up for sale, but there's extensive damage, I was told, so, that's something that, you know, with a lot of our buildings, that it's not turnkey, it requires a tremendous amount of, of work in those buildings, and the longer a building sits, the more problems oftentimes occur. Going back to the, to the car wash, there was some discussion at the last meeting, that that was a fifty-fifty split, that it was not a targeted building, that is a target, that was a targeted building, so it was not a fifty-fifty split. It was one of our targeted buildings.
Right.
Okay, do we have any other comments on the CRA?
Just a quick little comment, so, a couple of things that we like to do, and our vision for the CRA is to capture not only the work that needs to be done, but the work that's been completed. And so, our process for providing the grants to the community and retaining those grants are, is gonna change slightly, by just being able to easily access, have the, the grant successful on the webpage, possibly even a fillable, a, a fillable form, to make it easier, those will be emailed directly to the CRA manager and to the executive director. At the same time, I want to work with our city attorney to come up with an agreement form that once somebody does enter into a contract with, with an entity for work that the city's paying for, that they agree that they will not change or alter the work that you all approved based on their estimate. And if the fee or cost is gonna increase, or the work and scope is gonna change, they have to get written approval from management, and I, of course, would bring that to you all. So, those types of things will keep us from having colors change in the middle of the, of the night, because we were all thinking it was gonna be white, and it came out yellow, and nobody knew about it, and management sure, sure didn't know about it as well. After that's the case, there'll be an inspection form, and everything will go together in a packet, and then we would like to put that information on the website, so we can show the CRA's success and capture what our dollars are, are, are doing. The other element of it is the, is the economic vitality element of it, and we would like to put some sort of metric in place to go back and look six months or a year later and see how those dollars have helped the area in its economic achievement, whether it's new rentals, new people, new businesses, or jobs. And if it's homeowners, of course, value and how that's creating better tax base, so we'll bring that back to you all.
Okay. And with car wash also, they are, the painter told me that they're taking down all the signs, and they're redoing and gonna have more of the vintage signs.
Retro.
Retro sign on there, which is something that we did talk about, with, with where it was, that, that he said he felt like that was going to enhance the building as well. Do we have?
Hello?
Do we have anything else before I close out our CRA?
Just, I have one comment about the city manager's plans, I think it was great to have electronic applications, but I think we might need to consider also having them available in paper, because some people around here just don't do fillable. I see Commissioner Roy shaking his head, we can think of.
Tried to talk to our city manager about that, that he really wants everything digitized, and, and digital, and.
He will be excluding people.
And he will, and that, that is, that is an issue for some people, yes.
Right, I mean, not, we'll not be reaching everyone, and then, I think it's great to show the accomplishments, but I do think it's important for us to talk about where we can go from here, because it is my observation that it's been very effective in terms of appearance to spend the grant money on upgrading buildings, but that, that grant program has not moved the needle on getting vacant places occupied, and I think that's the topic that we really need to talk about, and I know it's difficult, but there are things that other CRAs do, so, that's, I mean, one is a good, is a good accomplishment, but we still have the lingering problem.
I know that Christina was working with the chamber, we had started getting that kind of ramped up, the chamber and the downtown partnerships, working together as collectively as a group for new businesses, so that's something that will be taking place when, when she gets back.
Right, but I think also the commission should talk about things that we could put into place, and things that we can do, and I'd certainly welcome any ideas that staff bring to us. So, that's, that's my comment on that, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna close up my journal of CRA, I'm gonna open up our regular commission meeting at this time. And so we're going to, I'm gonna open up our public hearing section, and we've got Resolution twenty-two-five-oh-seven. Do you want to read that for us?
Yes, ma'am, a resolution of the City of Crescent City Commission authorizing a new maintenance agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation. Just so you all know, this was requested of us to have a resolution for the new maintenance agreement. This is an agreement that we've had in place for years on end, this is for our green space, all of our maintenance within the right of ways. I do apologize, we've had a technical issue today with our computers, and Mel went to grab the exhibit A, which is the contract, so you all can see it, she'll have it here in just a moment for you all. This, of course, just has to be executed, and, and it goes with the agreement, once the state receives that, then that's, that'll be a new, new, new contract that we have with the new pay increase.
Yes, could we defer this until we actually have a Schedule A? I mean, we have other, don't we have two more ordinances?
If, does she have it?
I have a second, could we do?
Take it out of order, take it, yes, take it out of order. And if we want to move on, we can do ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twelve. Mr. Holmes, would you please read this for us?
Sure.
Read the half of it. This is on our sexual offender.
Right, so, would you like me to read the title?
Yes, sir, please.
So, the ordinance is twenty-two-five-twelve, an ordinance by the Commissioners of the City of Crescent City, Florida, created in Section eighteen-nine, and the code of ordinances of Crescent City, Florida, to be known, to be known as the Crescent City Sexual Offender and Sexual Offender Act, providing findings, intent, definitions, and residency requirements, authorizing collection or registration fees, prohibiting presence, loitering, or prowling within child safety zones with exceptions, restricting participation in Halloween activities with an exception, prohibiting rehabilitation of offenders, establishing accountability for property owners, landlords, and lessors, requiring notice for temporary emergency shelters, providing penalties for violations, providing for applicability and severability, and providing court effectivity.
Thank you, commissioner, I want to take a motion, please. This is on the second and final reading.
Well, Mayor, I did, I guess we need a motion first, but I did have a question that I sent the city manager about the last two paragraphs on page seven, but do we need the motion first, yes? Okay, so, I knew that the commission. Okay, um, so I knew that the commission approved on second reading, ordinance number 2025-12. Because the Sexual Offender and Sexual Predator Act.
Second.
Sorry.
You have a proper motion and a second, commissioners. We have, um, discussion commissioner DeVito. You said you had some questions.
Yes, and I sent these to the city manager on Monday. Don't mind if I've seen it. Um, and this really is a question for the city attorney. Well, first of all, the last paragraph says, passed and enacted by the City of Crescent City, Florida. It's got commissioners of Putnam County in there. Um, I just, I just have a question. We had, we discussed this on first reading. Um, the sheriff's attorney had basically used the Cali ordinance and did not have, um, the right form for city ordinance. Is, is, is that the correct wording for our effective date? And is that the correct wording for passed and enacted? And also, are we supposed to put in there the date of first reading? Do we do that for our ordinances?
It isn't required that you put in a date of the first reading. The language is satisfactory. There's nothing magical about that language for the, for the ordinance passes. Passed and enacted is sufficient. I, I read this over also, I missed that on Putnam County. There's one other location on page one where county is represented, should be city, that's, uh, in the third whereas clause from the bottom. Whereas this registration process consumes county resources, it should be city. Uh, with the exception of that, I didn't see any locations where they did not make the change to, uh.
The fourth whereas clause down. It says due to the significant representativeness the board believes extended residency restrictions, which would be speaking of the board commissioner. Which in the commission, or the commission, the fourth whereas clause.
Probably, probably was, but board would be a proper way of referring to you as well, but you would change that into a motion.
Yeah, board is, they refer to us.
Um, I have a question for the city attorney. So on page one, you mentioned the whereas clause. I think it's the third from the bottom that talks about the registration process consumes county resources. I did see that. And actually, I think it's correct saying county, because the county manages the registration. Um, and, uh, I think it's valid that we should be concerned about consumption of county resources. But it's really the way, uh, Mr. Sharp explained it, the registration process is county.
It's gonna be on them and not us. It's not going to, um, I have to agree that if we left county as it is, that it does, um, consumes county resources and not necessarily city resources.
I agree. If you, page four, under registration fees, if it does indicate registering to the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, so I would agree with that.
So we're, I know it seems odd, but, so we're expressing our concern for the use of the county resources. And then, but we do need to take out board and put in commission. And then, um.
Where do you say that? I, that was. Fourth whereas clause on page one. No, I think board is fine and, and as it's currently that you said it refers to us. We are also a board. So we keep it the way it is.
That must department and.
Yeah, strike of Putnam County, Florida, out of the last line on page seven, I think we'd be fine.
Okay. Do we have to, I mean, we can even do commissioners or, and leave Putnam County. Should we take out the whole thing? And that would be more of a Scrivener's error, wouldn't it?
Well, it says City of Crescent City, Florida commissioners. I was, I, I'd leave that in.
Okay.
I just said strike of Putnam County, Florida.
Okay.
Yes, and I, I think that would be very appropriate.
Okay, okay.
So just making sure we have those changes.
So we.
We have the, the technicalities.
Do we have any further discussion, commissioners? Do you have any input with this that you have? Okay, Commissioner Laurie, you're good? Okay, Commissioner DeVito, are you good? Okay, with that, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Please come forward if you would like to speak to this, um, ordinance. I'm gonna close public comment at this time. And when that comes back, I'm gonna ask for the real call. Uh, real call on ordinance number 2025-12. We moved things around on you. Apologize. Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
So, so adopted on the second reading. Let's get back. Are we ready for Resolution 2025-07?
She should be printed out. And so, um, the executed contract was done in 2024. It's a, it's a three-year contract, um, and that is for roadside litter, sweeping, ending sweeping. She's gonna print it out. This was already executed. The resolution was missing. So that is what I need. I don't need an executed new contract. We already have one. I need, I need the resolution to go with that to the state. And that's for us to be able to get paid.
And this is for the seventeen thousand four hundred dollars maintenance?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk will, um, show the contract.
That is divided into a quarterly payment.
Yes, ma'am, that is. You're correct.
Okay. My, um, did you, let me ask you this. With this resolution, did you copy this resolution from a former resolution? Or, the only reason I ask is because the maintenance locations, you have it going, the boundary of the city limit is at the former Tangerine Terrace Restaurant. It does go past that, especially on the west side of, um, seventeen.
Madam Clerk, we received this from the DOT, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this was there?
That would be, that would extend for, this city limits on both sides, probably. So that we have to take care of it.
Well, extends past that, um, and.
It's been lights still. It was only the Citron.
Yeah, all the way to Citron on the left side.
Do we maintain any of that?
We maintain all of that.
Yeah, we maintain all of that.
On the side? I'm sorry?
Yeah. And we can go back and look at it. This is what was provided? And, and it's already in place again. This is when we went to, um, get paid and submit the invoices, they had found that we were missing this resolution. So that, that's why they requested it. I'm trying to get paid for the last quarter, um, or third, third and fourth quarter.
Third and fourth, yeah, because they were missing several quarters.
Yes.
So are you putting this on a tickler system so that next year or whenever this is, okay, thank you.
We're on it.
Okay, do we have any other comments on this? Any other questions?
Well, I mean, I just, if it says Exhibit A, I am not comfortable voting on something if I don't have Exhibit A.
She's, she's getting, printing right now. And if it was, it's been attachment A from the beginning, when it was signed in twenty-four by Charles Rudd. And it's like, like I said, a three-year contract. We're just trying to make sure that all the checks are off for the DOT.
I know, but if we're working on it, we should see.
Get it.
To me, we.
Yeah, so we're gonna move on to the other ordinance if we can. Um, I'm gonna move on to ordinance 2025-06.
Big one.
Okay. If you or Dawn would read this for us, please, the title.
So, second final reading, revised ordinance 2025-06, admitting the public facilities element of the Crescent City Comprehensive Plan, brand ordinance re-adoption from August of 2024, close brand, in order to the City of Crescent City, Florida, admitting the public facilities element, water supplies, facilities work plan of the Crescent City Comprehensive Plan, providing for implementing administrative action, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for non-complication, and providing for ineffectivity.
You wanna talk a little bit about this?
I can, so this is something that has been in front of you all before. I had Mr. Mark Corret here from, uh, um, our, our AE that came in to speak to this. Uh, if you would like, I would like Mark to come up real quick just to reiterate where we are with this process and, and why Mr. Corret.
And follow me, yeah, speak to, tell us that.
Okay, so this is the, uh, water supply plan amendment to the public facilities portion of your comprehensive plan. Required to update this to be consistent with the, uh, water management's plan. We've actually adopted this previously and transmitted it. However, the, the date of the transmittal was, was out of bounds for the state. And so they've asked us to redo this. There's no change for water supply.
It's my understanding we have ten days from the date of adoption.
Ten days from.
So we have to go back to that.
If approved, we will submit it tomorrow.
Okay, so mayor, I just have one question.
Yeah.
So is this, are we still on our original correction of the original error that they found in the technicality? Or is this another?
This was a, this is a, another one.
This is another one, having to do with the timing of the transmittal.
Yeah, there, there, in terms of the, uh, content of the plan, this has already been signed off on.
Oh, I understand. Right.
It's all technical. It's, it all has to do with adoption and has to deal with.
I'm just clarifying, this is our second technical error. And I, I do not say that with disparagement to any staff. The first set of technicalities is.
Well, if, if we're counting this, uh, but pardon, it's the third.
It's the third, anyway. It is very technical. So that's all my, my question. So it's actually not second and third, okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'll understand the motion.
I knew that we approved on second, final, final, final reading, um, ordinance 2025-06.
I'm glad, second.
I'll, I'll go ahead and say that again.
Do we have a proper motion and a second?
Um, yes, commissioner. I noticed above, um, where it says ordinance 2025-26, it says in parentheses revised. Should that be included in the motion? That we're adopting revised 2025-06?
All right, did you say that? Yeah. I mean, revised ordinance 2025-06.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have any further comments? No, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close public comment. And then, um, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna ask for a roll call, please, ordinance 2025-06, which is the revised ordinance. Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Okay, so adopted and it'll be sent off tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Third time's the charm. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Um, with that, I'm gonna go back to Resolution, Resolution 2025-07. Are we, where are we on Exhibit A?
Uh, technical difficulty, but we'll have it in just a moment. I apologize.
That's, that's okay.
But we, we do have the contract. And we're forwarding a digital copy, a copy to Commissioner Laurie. And, uh, we're printing one, so we'll have one at least to pass to you all.
Oh, I have that request. Cause I was gonna ask for a short break before the business items. Could we take the right thing?
We can, if you, if everybody is commissioners, I should obey with that. Commissioner Laurie, since it's too early.
Nine, one.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna take a, about a seven-minute recess. And I will open up our short break.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. There's a three-year contract and there is a resolution attached to it.
Correct.
But DOT has asked for an updated resolution, so I will entertain the motion, please.
So is this, let me see, I have a question here. Is this going to supersede the other date? Is the new date gonna be 25?
No, this contract stays the same. So 2027, we'll be able to renegotiate the terms of, of, of the, of the contract for the maintenance work.
Okay, so now I'm gonna ask the stupid question, why are they asking for the new?
We do not know, other than we requested, uh, quarter three and four for payment and they said they wouldn't pay us until when we, they had an updated resolution. We said provide the resolution, they sent it over and we put it into this meeting to have it, so we could get it paid.
So they must have lost it.
Maybe so.
Maybe so. And in further discussions with them, I mean, in previous discussions with them, that mount has stayed the same and they're not bugging off of that mount.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just curious. Alright.
That's interesting. The resolution is signed by Charles Reddick, the contract was signed by Malcolm Brodehart.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025, uh, to authorize the new maintenance agreement to stay before Department of Transportation.
Sorry.
I, I think it needs to be 2025-07. I did hear the 07.
2025-07.
Yes, we have a proper motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? No, I'm gonna open it up. Do we have any public comment on this? This is the maintenance agreement that we currently have with FDOT for our mediums and the, um, the lightways along Summit Street. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close public comment. Uh, Madam Burke, if you do a roll call for us, please.
Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Lori.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBeto.
Aye. Mayor Myers.
Aye. Okay, so approved. Thank you very much. Okay, let's, um, close out the public hearing and we're gonna open up our business items. This is the agenda items, um, that we have. You wanna start with Pastor Hobbs? Do you want to come forward?
Hello.
Good evening. How are you this evening?
Wonderful. How are you?
Great. What we have in front of us, um, do you wanna talk a little bit about this real fast?
Sure, sure. We, we got a request, um, and out of courtesy for the commission, of course, getting Eva Lion Park, um, wanted to bring it just, uh, so we can have a discussion, make sure that the pastor had a chance to have a voice and just explain or answer any questions that may, uh, that may be asked, but, um, you know, permit is in and so we're ready to move forward with this and just make everybody aware of the great things that are happening.
You wanna talk to us a little bit about what you're hoping to do on this event?
Sure, uh, first, let me ask one question. Has anybody ever heard from, uh, Jesus Jam that they usually have the night before? Uh, if they're doing that this year, have they applied?
She hasn't done that in a couple of years. It's probably been, yeah, at least the last two years she hasn't done that.
If that's something that the city would like to, like if the person who was doing that can't do that no longer or whatever, we'd be happy to pick that up. If that event was something that was great for the city and the gospel.
It was, it was the gospel scene the night before, the Angel Duke was doing, the Angel Duke was, was doing.
Yeah, we enjoy doing stuff like that. We do stuff like that already. We also hold youth rallies and stuff, uh, like, like that. What we're currently talking about though is probably five or six years ago, just on Spur, we was decorating our big float for the parade the night before and we all, you know, a bunch of us was out there and we said, how we just jump on the float and run through the city and show our lights and sing Christmas carols? And it turned into something. So anyways, we do it every year now and, uh, so this year, we kinda wanted to move it. We had a lot of, uh, public peoples saying, how can we, can we get involved in that too? We've always just done it with our church people. So this year, we had the idea of moving the base station in front of our church because it's outside the city and moving it to Eva Lion's Park, you know, serve some like cookies and apple cider or whatever, hot cocoa and, uh, then kinda do like twenty-minute tours and let people who wants to jump on there, go Christmas caroling with us, see what we do, drop them off, pick up another load and kinda do that for a couple hours.
Okay. I think that's a, sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah, it is.
The gazebo will be lit, the park will not be lit, but the gazebo will be lit.
Yeah, our trailer will light the whole park.
Good, good, good. So do we have any, um, questions, Commissioners? Do we have any other questions? You've got the application in the, um, in your packet?
Right. Mayor, I had questions that I sent to the city manager on Monday. Um, because the way I see it, I mean, to me, this is really a staff issue that should be, was asked at the staff level, but it has not been addressed to date. Um, when I looked at the application, it does not say how many people are expected. I think that determines whether it's a Class C or whatever event. It really should say how many people are expected, but, um, my main concern is the safety aspect. There's not a site plan here and there's not a parking plan. And, um, I love the caroling float. I look for it every year. I stand out in front of our house. I drag my husband out there. Um, and we sing, um, when the float comes by, but, um, I'm very familiar with this area and, uh, I sent questions to the city manager and he said he was gonna send them to you. It's not clear to me, um, that there's a plan, an orderly plan for where that float is going to park to onboard and offboard people. And I will share with you and the neighbors have a concern about this also. Um, number one, those side streets are the cut-through streets that people turn down very quickly to go to Main Street so that they can head either north or south. So if you're going to park the flatbed there, you have to make sure that it's far enough in from Highway 17 so that somebody does not turn in and hit you.
Absolutely.
Um, a neighbor already on the Myrtle side, that's the south side, has said they don't think there's really enough room there without blocking driveways to do the float. And then if you go on the Fulham side to the north, which is Cypress Avenue, I was just noticing today, I don't know how long the flatbed is, but there's two power poles, um, that you would have to navigate. And it just, to me, there needs to be a site plan and a traffic plan because if you're gonna park the flatbed actually on the street and load kids on and off, um, nobody's expecting you to be there. So that, there's nothing in the permit about that.
I don't have anything in the permit. I can add that I'm the one that always does the pulling of the float. Um, I pull the hay wagon for our Harvest Fest pull and that goes down and around by the, uh, uh, chestnut down there around where the lake is and we do so for that. One of the things that I did for a living before I actually became a pastor was I owned a semi-truck and I, and drove, uh, for, for, so I'm very familiar with navigating, you know, large vehicles and stuff. However, uh, we didn't necessarily, I thought we would probably get from you what your idea was, would be the, because we're okay with doing it however you feel like it would be, uh, you know, not in the way or, and, and it's not gonna stay there. Uh, I was also told right before I got here, my wife, who is, I'm not remembering from my mind, she, without her, I would, I would be lost. Um, so it's just her and Jesus keeping me together, but, uh, uh, anyway, she told me to make sure that, I also let you know that our church people are actually going to park either A at our church or B at Dixie so that that wouldn't be a bunch of cars prowling around there and gonna actually come in on the float. And then they will be off and serving, uh, the people that come or the people that are waiting and, you know, the cocoa and the cookies and whatever. Did that help any? It sounds like it made a difference.
You can easily, so there's an area right there in that parking spot, um, on the north side. If I can back that, um, what was that thing that Boone left that I've been driving all over? If I can back that in there, I am positive you can back a flatbed in there for the trailer. And you can just back it straight in, um, and without any problem. And as far as parking, um, I, probably you could reach out to Pastor David across the street. They allow, they usually allow parking. They might even want to join in with some of the singing as well.
Awesome.
But, you know, that would help you with some of the parking also.
There's five spots at Johnson and Moberger.
And they're, and I'm sure that as long as there's not, you know, something going on, um, that they would have parking over there too. And then you've got parking, um, right here on our corner.
Right.
So you can also park over there.
Wonderful. Awesome.
So that they're not having to go all the way to Dixie and then you're having to try to maneuver people all over.
Yeah, I was concerned a little bit about that. My wife said, you know, 'cause I thought a lot of the people won't, some of the people won't leave in the middle of it or something and have their cars down there. So that's a much better plan. Thank you.
Maybe if I could, it's, I mean, to me, usually the way this has been done in the past, staff had, you know, talks to the applicant and they get the site plan. It's not usually something that we, I did not expect that we would be designing this at the, at the city commission meeting, but it is our responsibility to make sure, I mean, this is an ordinance, that the park is protected from damage and also our primary responsibility in issuing these permits is public safety. So to me, it's up to our city staff with consultation with the sheriff to make sure that there's, there's a plan for this and I'm, I'm just very concerned that there's some kind of lighting or cones for something so that somebody tying onto whatever street you're parking on doesn't run into the crowd.
Yeah, and, and as discussed with you over the phone on it, this is something that we were gonna be doing after this meeting, making sure that we had a plan in place, making sure that those safety protocols were taken, uh, make sure we had proper lighting, make sure we had cones and if you needed officers, we would be able to, uh, somehow give you a touch with them to accommodate that. So we don't know how many people, that's the thing on, on an event like this, you don't know the turnout. I think pastor would only know, um, his people from his church. How many of those would be that, that would people put on a permit? Other than that, you just don't know what that turnout's gonna be.
Um, and then Park and Market Square, I think it's just a nice walk across the street there and then we, they don't have to go to the other end. And I think that pulling in on Cypress will make it easy to get on and off. I mean, I was just there last night, sitting there at seven o'clock and there was a car around with some of the people that I was with that were parked there. So, I mean, but then if you were in the middle of the block where the parking is, right there, right in front of Johnson and Moberger, then no one's gonna come around and hit you. You can see that's enough room, it's a few hundred feet and, you know.
And you'll, like you said, you'll be well lit.
Yeah, right now, right.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Alright. Um, and this is for the public to join in, is that correct?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're not selling anything. It's all free. We just want the public to kind of spark the, uh, spirit of joy and holiday spirit.
Well, and thank you.
Thank you for it.
Yeah.
Oh, please, yes.
I can tell somehow, you just wait for Christmas, Christmas carols. So, yeah. So thank you for your willingness to do this for the community and to bring it into the city limits.
Absolutely.
I know that'll be a benefit and the homeowners will enjoy this. I believe the Methodist Church is giving it the following weekend.
Oh, cool.
But I think they're starting down at the church. I think they're starting down at the church, but, okay, so can I?
That's a, that's a great problem to have. If you're caroling.
Yes, Commissioner DeBeto.
I would like to make a motion. Yes, I would like to move that we approve the application for a special event by Pastor Hobbs and Mrs. Hobbs, um, for caroling with Bunded Harvest Ministries to take place on Friday, December 5th and Eva Lion Park. Um, provided that the applicant works with the city manager to, um, establish, um, a, a site plan and a parking plan for the event.
You'll second that?
Proper motion in a second. Do we have any other comment? If none, um, I'm gonna go ahead with all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And so approved. And before you leave, this is for the parade. You're my last applicant. So I wanted to make sure you had that.
Perfect.
I think I sent a text to your, to the, to the phone, yeah.
Okay. Great.
So please, I know last year you were very involved in that.
Yes. We actually have at least two, but we had another float with our school Crescent City Christian Academy. They'll have their, this year, we've always done it together with our church. This year, we had one of our school parents step up and say, we've got the trailer that would be awesome today, great. So we're actually gonna have our school float and our church float separate. They'll be together, but it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be really good. Yeah, we're excited.
Thank you. If you have any questions.
Yes, I'll give you, I'll give you a card if you can wait just a moment.
Sure.
And I'll give you a card.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting all this time this afternoon. Okay, let's move on to our volleyball practice. This is for, um, volleyball practice in Harry Banks Park.
Yes.
Where they currently are doing the football practice for the Pop Warner.
Correct. Uh, Pop Warner will conclude soon, so, and, uh, the third week of November, that field will be available. Um, so lights will need to be coordinated with Public Works and we're just asking permission to kind of move forward with this request.
Okay, um.
And we, uh, we approve the request for volleyball practice in Harry Banks Park.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm second.
We have a proper motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mayor, I have a question. So who is actually the applicant that says Smith something?
Martinez.
Okay, and is this an individual or an organization?
I believe this is an individual that is working with an organization, um, but the organization is, is not the one that did the applicant. It was a, an individual that did that. Correct?
Okay, so, I mean, doesn't, the reason I'm asking is because they have to hold, um, hold harmless, are we charging them a fee?
Uh, I believe that was just something that is in our, uh, code, uh, for the field and because of the activity, they, they have that insurance requirement.
We don't have, um, and we don't charge the Pop Warner a fee. And they've been practicing here for, for a number of years and we've never charged them a fee to use that. It's just nice that somebody's using those lights that we, that we put out there.
And that, well, my other question is, um, it says lights will need to be coordinated. Do we know how that's gonna be done?
Uh, once we get a schedule from them, uh, we'll be in contact with them, make sure that our Public Works, um, personnel will take care of turning on those lights for them. Uh, I'll talk with Public Works to see if we have a timer in place as well and if not, we'll be working on getting a timer in place.
We do have, there is a timer, there is, there is a timer on that and Jay. We do have, there is a timer, there is, there is a timer on that, and James, who, with Pop Warner, he usually handles that, but it probably works.
Well, I think at one point, Pop Warner volunteered to do the lights. I don't know.
They are, they are doing, James is doing the lights.
They're doing the light?
Yes.
Um, I'm just, I don't know, so we're just, I mean, there's no, there's no one really, do we usually get indemnifying to buy with the athletic groups? Cause this is not an organization, it's just a person. I mean, it seems to me they should be specifying, if there's an organization, they should specify it.
And, and it might, it might just be that if this is the girls, this is the travel, it's possibly the travel team. I would think it is a travel team because the other is practice.
What, and you have the extra practice?
Right. Right, so could we just get some clarification in this form at some point as to who the actual group is?
Absolutely.
And then make sure they have insurance, some insurance, which I pretend to have to.
Yeah, they should have, especially since it's football, then they would, then they would absolutely have insurance.
But I think it's great that they're usually.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we got the lights.
So, yeah, that's why we got the lights.
Okay, so is it time for a motion?
I'm, I'm entertaining a motion.
Um, pardon, are there people?
Oh, there's another, sorry, a motion, is that, okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, well, then we're good, okay, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, so approved.
Right.
Um, and on Pop Warner, I will report, um, they are going to the championship this weekend. So, um, I told them at the next meeting that we would possibly, if, um, that they could come forward and, and, um, they win, because they're gonna win. He is, he is confident they are going to win. Okay, so let's move on to the city property discussion, if we can. Do you wanna?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, so, a couple of things come to light recently, uh, with some interest in city property. Um, I wrote a summary here for you all, but I'll just, I'm gonna summarize that even more. Um, basically, currently, right now, we have a building, uh, that is the government building. We're leasing that building. Um, for whatever reason, we had a two and a half percent increase in that contract every year, uh, to have an increase and has not been the case. Um, currently, right now, we have a lot of exposure over there, um, with, uh, roof repairs that are needed that we'll be discussing tonight, um, as well as replacement of a, um, uh, air conditioner.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I wanna correct you just real quick.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The last few years, I have had that increase, I have.
Okay.
That increase has been taking place.
Okay, I, I was told it didn't, I apologize.
Okay, no, it hasn't.
I'll, I'll correct that with staff. Um, so, with that in place, we, we, we probably get about a little over twenty thousand dollars a year. The roof, um, this year, the roof and the AC, of course, are gonna be creeping around that same cost total together. There is interest in that building from the county tax collector for purchase. Um, we had a conversation, very high level, um, that said, would there be, um, would it be to the city's advantage to, to strike this, this conversation and have this start? And they said absolutely, they would love the opportunity for that. So, um, in the interim, since that time, I've reached out to a real estate agent here in the city and just pulled comps, not necessarily on that building, but on the area. Um, in the last twenty-four months, for, um, for the, um, commercial spaces, it's been around sixty-four dollars a square foot. Um, that is pretty low, but recently, in the last, uh, few months, not the last twenty-four, that's an average, um, but in the last few months, we've had a recent sales of around two hundred and twenty-five. One was one ninety and the other one was even higher, but the average came out to two twenty-five between the two properties. Um, so that's just something to discuss. We have to, you know, uh, talk about possible sale. Um, I would like to talk with the commission about implementing a deferred maintenance plan. If we decide to keep it, we need to have a plan on how we're gonna maintain it. Um, that's, currently, hasn't been the case. And, or to renegotiate a new lease term, uh, as well, uh, with an equitable balance that, that, uh, that interest of both the city officials and tenants that, that would be equal, so it's a little bit better. Um, another, uh, in addition to concerns about the lease of government building, attention must also be given to another municipal asset, our fire station. We've had discussions about this, and as discussed before, interest from prospective buyers has emerged for this property. Uh, we're look, we're currently looking at alternative possible locations, and I'm waiting to hear from the local Realtor on those comparable sales, which I did get, uh, after I had written this. Um, the acquisition of, of comps, uh, is really important, and being that some of these facilities most recently was above two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred dollars a square foot, we, we, we could get a, a, a good price for that, um, property, that building. Um, uh, one more, uh, uh, piece of property that the city has is this existing unused vacant lot situated behind the government building, uh, which has attracted interest from one of our entrepreneurs here in the city. And while currently idle within the city's portfolio, this parcel represents potential opportunities for development. And the sale could generate additional revenue for us as well, um, or serve, to better serve the community and more effectively, um, than its current status. So we're currently, uh, trying to evaluate all viable options and, uh, right now, this is informational, uh, informational only at this time, but we also have, I believe, a, a person who owns the property, uh, would like to come on.
Pablo, would you like to come up and, and talk?
Mayor, can I ask you a question first? I'm, wasn't sure I heard correctly about the government building, and I don't know exactly what part of the building you're talking about. Did I hear you say that the county tax collector wishes to buy the building?
Well, let's be real careful with this, because, yes.
Right. There is interest in that building.
By, by whom?
Not the tax collector.
Correct.
Yes.
No, it's not the tax, tax collector?
I am not a hundred percent sure on the budget of where the funds are gonna come from, but there is interest in that building for purchase for the people that are currently using the building.
And maybe not now, but maybe at a future day.
Correct.
A tax collector, the, the legislation, my understanding, was changed, and so they do have the ability to purchase property.
Correct.
Um, and, and so, but I don't know that she's wanting to do that now, and I don't know that that's a discussion. Um, I think more it was, um, Pablo has a definite need
Correct.
Um, for that back parking lot, and he has, he has shared, shared with me, and I turned it over to you
Correct.
Um, that he would like to talk to us about that back parking lot, not all of the back parking lot, just the back parking lot, um, directly behind his property. So.
Yes. So Mr. Pablo, if he could come up and speak?
And we also said the fire station cannot be sold until we vacate it.
Correct. Correct.
Yes.
Well, anything you sell, you're gonna have to be there to be surplus.
Surplus.
And that involves finding that you don't have a present or anticipated future need. And the other thing I would mention to you is, once you sell property, you probably are getting it back, and so, so, I'll leave it at that.
And that was, that was gonna be my, my next question to you is, as we go through this, about the surplusing process and how we have to do that, so. All yours.
Well, my name is Pablo Fonsanellos. I'm the owner of the Parker House Resort and Lounge in Crescent City. Uh, and the property right behind the Parker House, my property goes just, just a few feet right behind my building. I do not own the parking spots there, or the city does. And I would like to purchase that, whether it's the whole parcel or way up to Main Street or Hathaway. So I can not only have, the, the parking lot would be mine, but I can also expand part of my building because I'm running out, I have been running out of storage room, you know? So I, um, make my storage room bigger, you know, on the backside of the building. Uh, and like I said, I, I've been interested in that for years, you know, but the city has never, you know, don't, because they, they always, they've been concerned about what I'm gonna do with that property. I'm gonna issue a parking, I'm gonna buy this right now. My turn parking lot is, this, the, the county is more used on my turn parking lot than, than my customers do. If you guys are aware, uh, you, you look to the left, you say, oh, the park is busy, no, the park is not busy.
Okay.
But, and, and I, and I, I thank you for, you know, letting me, you know, at least put the idea out there that I'm interested in buying or, or Pablo, the backside of the parking house.
Commissioner Devita?
Okay, um, hi Pablo, thank you for being here and, um, so about the parking spaces in front that you mentioned, do you own the parking spaces in front?
The par, the parking, the, uh, the front of the parking house?
In front.
I do.
Okay, so my question, my question to you is, um, are you saying, are you saying that the government customers are using some of your parking spaces?
All of it.
The, all of, I don't think that.
I have parking in the back myself.
Okay, so is it possible, um, that you can mark your parking spaces?
My parking spaces are marked. I got signs that said, uh, parking to your customers only, those will be throwaway, you know? Nobody participates in that. But I'm not complaining about the parking, I, I, you know.
I understand, I understand. So the only reason I ask is just to clarify that you own spaces in front and I understand they're being used. And, um, in light of the fact that nothing is going to happen tomorrow, um, I just wanted to acquire. So you actually own those in front? That's very helpful to know. Okay, I just wanna clarify that. Thank you.
I wanna own the ones in the back, that's all I have.
I, I understand, I heard that part.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't really know that, I didn't, I, I thought that I'm gonna do more of the spaces, but then they, they were surveyed dumb and they said, no, you don't, you own just barely right there.
Okay, right, but you do own ones in the front?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate you, you know, just taking into consideration, putting that piece of property, buying the tax rolls to be, then to be served for the city, tax money wise, you know, and for me, business wise.
And so, Lon, you're saying that we would have to, or surplus that portion?
Well, whatever you sell, the first step is to declare it surplus by a resolution, and, you know, that involves finding. And then, in my opinion, it would be inappropriate for you to offer it only to one by its public property, its taxpayer own. And in all fairness, he might, this gentleman, not who I don't know, might be willing to bid, but I think that the public would, it would, whatever your sale process is, it would have to involve an opportunity for anybody in the public to, to bid or, or purchase. Otherwise, you know, you're referring a special privilege on somebody who takes taxpayer-owned property and sell it to an A person, in my opinion. Then that, the opinion I've held for a long, long time, involving public properties, and I, and I have support for that. So, I, whether you, you know, you, you make your decision as to how you think you wanna go, but if you, if you go, you're gonna have to make a declaration that you don't have a present or anticipated future need for the property. And then you're gonna go from there, so.
I have some more, I have a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, first of all, I would like to thank you. You've always been a very good supporter of the downtown partnership, um, and, and I commend you for that, I think.
I think my business has established since nineteen eighty-three.
You're, you're a great supporter of us, I like that. Um, but I think my interest is, it, it, it sounds like you want to really kind of take that back area and also put storage on the back of it.
I wanna, I wanna, uh, make my storage part of my, my little store, you know, part of it.
Yeah.
Make my, my storage room bigger.
Yeah, and so, I, I, I guess, I, you know, I'm looking at something big, okay, that, that might, I mean, you've got quite a lot of room back there, really. Um, plus you could probably take, you know, instead of just going, I guess you could just go straight back, but I think we'd have to kind of see what you had in mind, and of course, that would be after.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but see, I mean, even right now, if I wanted to put a, a, let's say, a, a container,
Yeah.
to use it for storage, I can't, because it's a city-owned property.
Right. Okay, that's, yeah, I, I, but it could become a little bit of a dilemma, you know, if we have to go through what we have to go through.
Well, yeah.
But, you know, we gotta look, look at it.
So, that's all, that's all I'm asking, you know?
Yeah, we gotta look at it.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
And anything that you decide to build would still be in line with our legislative code and have to go through any approval process, so.
And you also have the option of leasing the parking lot, you know?
Um, that's true.
Mayor, I have, yes, Commissioner Devita, when people have asked for questions, I, I have some comments on this that I want to share.
Please, take it.
Okay, um, the, this particular block is why we're a more successful and heavily used block. Um, the Parker House and the government building. And I think we need, we need to look at the big picture. Um, I know when Linda Myers was the tax collector, she was here, and she gave us statistics about the draw to Crescent City that the government complex provides to us. I mean, not only is that, um, voting precinct for Crescent City, but her stats show that people from North Fallujah and all over South LA come to use that government complex. Um, I, it, it's a, it's a draw. It's, it's a good thing, we've talked about this before, it's a good thing to have here. Um, the Parker House is very successful. Um, but, you know, to, I don't agree with the city manager that that parking lot is quote unused, because it is used, and it's, it's used when we vote, it's used, um, it's u, we have a need for parking in the business area of Crescent City. And one of the, um, I guess, one of the things that I didn't think was particularly well-done um, in our CRA plan was, um, was addressing parking. I, I thought that that left a lot to be desired because, except for suggesting we build a parking garage, the CRA plan just does park on the side streets. So I personally think that the city needs to look at a parking plan for the more heavily areas, heavily used areas. Um, and I think the city attorney raised a good point with us when he says that selling a parking lot, um, you know, is pretty final. And we, we would be boxed in, so I, I think this is something where we need to look at the big picture. Um, I don't think we should be deciding it right away because we clearly have a lot of interest in this location. Um, and we have to decide, you know, what works best for the city as well as the really viable entities. And as well, aren't we, isn't the sheriff using that parking lot?
Um, yeah, they use, they use that back parking lot. There's, there's a lot of moving parts here.
That's why we don't use the front parking lot. I know we've been asked to see patrol cars in that front parking lot.
Right.
But I'll be honest, if, if, if he put up a fence right now, there will be no parking for the government parking lot, front side.
Right.
There's, there's forward, I mean, I hate it, but when you, when you park a car and you gotta go to the back out, if you need to put a fence up, you would not be able to back out and turn around, so. Kudos to you for not putting up a fence right there, because I probably wouldn't have a long time we don't wanna see all the people going in and out. That's one reason we don't park up front, just to respect everybody, just try to park up there. And not only that, you know, he said, bar, people don't wanna see, you know, you guys.
That's, that one, so I, I guess.
We'll worry about that when we put them there.
Right, well, at, at least maybe they think twice, you know, before they walk out. But anyway, so I guess my, my main concern is that we look at the big picture, that we balance competing interests, and we think about what is, what is going to best serve everybody for the future. And, um, part of the puzzle is what happens to the fire station, and we, we don't know that yet. And as well, I, I think we need to take another look at that heavily used area on North Summit and figure out a good parking plan for the future, cause I, I don't think we have one.
What, you're wearing it somewhere?
Where the Parker House is, that's his property. No, no, I mean, there are other businesses on North Summit, and eventually, we're going to run out of parking. We don't have a future parking plan. If somebody builds on every lot, we are going to be way short of parking.
Maybe this is an open.
You know, I, you know, I, I hate to, I hate to cut this short, but I think this whole conversation needs to go to a work church, or workshop, or, he's got a lot of stuff in there, he could take all night to discuss this.
Oh, well, I don't think we can decide.
Oh, we're, and we're not going to decide.
We're not really deciding.
It was important that, this, this is some conversations that are going on.
Right.
And, and Pablo definitely, he has a need, um, you know, he's very limited where he is, and so he came to me and I turned it over to, to the city manager, and so at least this opens up that conversation, and now it's open and, and we know where we are, and I think from this point on, we just give direction to the city manager to. and, and we know where we are. And I think from this point on, we just give direction to the city manager to, to to research it.
Yes.
And to see what can be done and how it can dance the, you know, Pablo and the county office. I am not in favor.
Do we do it?
Yes.
You know, to try and get that done.
Correct.
And maybe it's an opportunity for us to have a, a private public partnership. If we need parking and Pablo needs it as well, maybe we team up together. If he needs to expand this building, maybe we can work on changing uh the platform, allowing that and uh teaming up on a, on a parking lot.
I think it does.
Well, and that's what I mean, it, it takes more of a discussion than bragging.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm not, and I will say this, that right now, just because of the service that's provided by that county office, um, I am not in favor of us going, um, doing anything to increase those fees. So I'm just gonna put that out there.
On that, you're talking about the rent?
Yes.
Okay.
That is not.
Yeah, because that's coming up in December.
Yeah, and it, it's, you know, it's a county office that benefits this whole entire area tremendously.
But if we're, but if we are in charge of maintenance and, and the upkeep.
And that's not the, that's important, yeah.
Okay, basically it's a, you're getting seven, about seventy-nine dollars a month according to the twenty thousand dollars that we get. And, and we know the cost of roofs, we know the cost of air conditioners. Um, I'm not sure why we haven't had a, a separate pot of money, right, to, to do some of this maintenance right along, but um, that's, that's a lot of area for very cheap.
It is, and typically in a, in a lease, you don't have, in a commercial lease, you don't have those components as part of it. It's usually the police that has to tear on it. So anyway, I think, yes, Commissioner DeVito, I'd like to make one.
Yes, but just to clarify, I believe that the tax collector has already paid for some improvements.
She, they paid, they did. They did, I think, over forty thousand dollars initially.
What I thought.
Over forty thousand dollars initially, and they continue. They're the ones that painted the building. They have that, that building painted. Um, so they've done a lot of, a lot of the upkeep and maintenance on that, on that building, that they didn't have to, especially the painting on the outside. But that was important to them, so.
Okay, that's gonna come up in December, so we'll have that discussion.
We will.
Okay, okay. So is everyone in favor of um the city manager doing further research on this and, and working with um Pablo to see how? Okay. Okay, let's move on. We've got, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so patient tonight.
On the next item, uh, item D, uh, we're requesting additional funds to complete Fletcher Dock. Um, of course, I gave you a write-up to explain where we are with this. Um, right now, when they started the initial phase of the project that you all had already approved, there was an additional sixty to seventy feet of the dock that was severely compromised due to one of the nor'easters that we have um gotten and uh so we received a quote from the contractor in the range of six thousand dollars. Um, I'm asking for an additional four on top of that, just to cover incidentals and unforeseen that we may need. I don't wanna have to come back to the commission um again, uh, for things that, uh, that, that could set us back timewise, so um a couple of things to caveat here. They are providing um for hurricane straps, uh, which was done previously and the areas that received the hurricane straps did not take damage during the nor'easter. That is a mitigating factor they're gonna add for free. They are also going to lift the dock. We had discussions about lifting dock. Um, we've had success uh with other people that have lifted their docks. They're going to lift the dock free of charge now, uh, lifting it by one foot for the entire length of the dock and the platform. Um, so again, these funds were originally budgeted through the Better Place Plan. We're looking to still get reimbursement from FEMA slash the FDM um at project completion.
Not for the ten thousand though?
It'll be for the, it'll, it'll be for the additional cost. Uh, we're still gonna submit everything the way.
FEMA is not gonna pay for that, that most recent damage.
Correct, correct, but we are submitting everything to them and we'll line item out all of the work that was extra from the damage. We have to separate that from the new storm.
So the additional ten thousand dollars you're asking, that separate apart from the FEMA reimbursement, is that correct?
Correct, and it will be closer to six thousand, Mayor. I just put the ten to cover.
I understand, just, just in case there's some overages.
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions on this?
I move that we approve um the up to ten thousand dollars additional funding to complete the Fletcher Park Dock.
So he wants ten thousand dollars more?
He wants six thousand dollars more and.
So, you know, 'cause you're saying you're requesting additional funds to complete Fletcher Dock.
Yes.
Ten, ten K.
Yes, correct. Additional four thousand dollars is for unforeseen incidentals, just.
A offer, should he run into something, something be rotten that he's not?
Just in case, yes.
And this is to become, this is coming out of Better Place, correct? I think that needs to be part of the message.
Yes, it is.
But we've already agreed to six thousand, correct?
No.
No, no.
No.
We have agreed to any?
No.
This was additional sixty to seventy feet that was damaged in the last nor'easter.
Okay, I just wanna make sure how.
So I'll, I'll append it in my.
Yes.
All right.
Or append my motion to be, that it comes from Better Place Plan Funds.
I'll second it. We have a proper motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? On, as Commissioner DeVito.
I guess my only question as um, you know, should we make a motion for six thousand dollars and then if additional funds are needed, we could approve that later?
No, he's, he's working on it now. I mean, he's, I mean, that, that's the reason he's saying this, is that he doesn't wanna have to come back to us because we have been um trying to get this fixed. We're on his schedule right now and so that would hold him up and he would move on to another project.
Correct.
We're, you're of the opinion that are, are the, the hope that it's only going to be the six thousand.
Correct.
And you'll come back to us with a report as to how much we've expended, correct?
Yes, and it, and it should be the six thousand. If there is a difference or something that is unforeseen, I will make you all aware via email.
Well, he's, he's gotta turn in how much he's spending.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah. Yeah, so whatever, running value or how much he's spending.
And just, definitely encourage um overspending, but if this is what we need to do, then that's what we need to do.
Well, and he quoted us right there and that six thousand mark is something that Derek has asked, just, just for the offer in case of it. He has that, the city manager has that, and it will be up to you to approve anything additional, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're giving you that as critical nonsense.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? See any public comment? We need to get this, this is, this is.
The board.
The community's been asking for this, being this, you know, finding, so we need to move on this. Um, could you do a roll call for us please?
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Herr Myers?
Aye, okay, so approved. Let's go on to requesting approval for the purchase of Public Works Equipment.
All right, um, actually, uh, the next one is for the roof repair, correct?
Oh, the roof repair, I apologize.
No, you're fine. So regarding the roof section, going back to the Government Building, leased by the county, we've had an ongoing issue with several leaks. We've obtained quotes for the repair. The quotes, um, the quote we're requesting to, to move forward with is with South State Roofing. They are the ones that did our uh fire station most recently. They're proposing to remove the twenty-five foot by twenty-five foot section of roofing down to the bare wood. Repair, replace all decking that is rotted and remodel uh the new deck. One's totally exposed, though. Depending on the damage, there may be cost incurred and if you go to their quote, they gave you additional cost that may be incurred um by the one by and two by four lumber at the cost of six dollars and fifty cents a square foot. What I'm asking is to take their quote of forty-five hundred dollars and add an additional forty-one hundred dollars, which is the twenty-five foot by twenty-five foot section, which is six hundred and twenty-five square feet, multiplied by their multiplier of six dollars and twenty-five, actually it's six dollars and twenty-five cents a foot, um, at forty-one hundred dollars. And that will be also for unknown damages to make sure that we are covered through the process of fixing the roof. Um, I am fully intending to only spend forty-five hundred.
I believe you said roof.
Um, I don't have the size of the whole roof. I'd have to get back to you.
Yeah, I will just hold.
Um, I know that the roof was replaced a few years back. Uh, I believe it was probably ten years ago. Uh, but I'd have to go and give us information for you.
It's a, it's a flat roof?
Yes.
And the air conditioning is, is been the big problem there.
Yes, it is.
Is it, is it on the roof?
Yes.
Currently, right now.
See, 'cause that's, you're not supposed to do that anymore.
I know, correct.
And we are, they are proposing, we have a quote actually to, and I'm gonna be finalizing that with Keith, to remove the old AC and the county um is looking at splitting costs, but it's a split unit system, so it will no longer be on the roof.
Yeah, it shouldn't be on the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's a build, it's an old building and that's where they, that's where they, that's where they use, they have.
Do you know which, which section is in the back? I don't know if it's the voting room?
Well, it's like someone said, and then, then.
The hard button.
Uh, I believe this is in the back. It is in the back.
Towards the back. I hadn't gone up there and seen it.
That's where all the leakage is, it's pouring all in that back area, in the voting room.
Voting room.
In the voting room, in their storage room, and they've had to move things around in storage because when we have bad storms, it just is pouring in there. Um, and they're worried about having damage to the records, so.
Okay, so now where's this one coming from?
Better Place Funds.
Okay, and so how much we got in that Better Place Plan?
So.
It sounds like we got millions.
We haven't been spending uh money out of there as of yet, but Steve and I have a plan to, um, just like giving you all the reports monthly for finances, everything for the CRA, everything for the Better Place, we're gonna have a summarized uh, um, note for you to look at.
So how much money we got in there right now?
So currently looking there, Steve, where, where are we on our Better Place?
Four hundred thousand, I believe.
How much?
Four hundred thousand?
I believe, that's what the carryout was.
And then there's, we're projected to get another two something this year. Cause we didn't, we didn't spend much cost to get it.
So we have the money then to, to uh do this?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Are we also, are we gonna have the money to do the air conditioning?
We will. We will.
All right. Okay, can I'll entertain a motion? Um, I move that we approve the uh funds to repair the um leaking roof section at Government Building for, uh, we will approve a total of eight thousand six hundred dollars. That's what's at the top. Okay. Up to eight thousand six hundred dollars from the Better Place Plan Fund. Um, with work to be done by South State Roofing, I will see.
Second question.
Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. Any other further discussion? If none?
I do wanna add one thing, Mayor, just to answer your question. We have four hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars in the Better Place Fund. You're just correct.
Thank you. Madam Burke, could you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Herr Myers?
Aye. So approved.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item, D, requesting approval for purchase of reversible tamping plate and a water wagon at seventy-five hundred dollars total. Um, if you want to add this that I didn't put in here, this cost is for basically brand new. The temp, I would say it would be important to get something brand new because of the um, the nature of its use and uh, and to get a, a proper warranty. Um, but it's a small piece of equipment that not only enhances operational efficiency, but also ensures uh quality workmanship, ultimately leading to long-term savings and prove, and improved public satisfaction. Right now, I, I am not satisfied with our patchwork, um, but.
Well, I mean, up now, 'cause he runs from pressure wash before and it hasn't.
He's the same one that did it last year?
Wow.
So it was the same person that did it last year and he actually is, um, is very good. It's any pressure washer is gonna be. And it's for a short period of time and it, and it needs to, 'cause we had it painted and, and we've got to maintain it and that's the problem, is we do this repair work and then we don't maintain it.
Correct.
We don't ever maintain hardly anything.
Correct.
Um.
Once it's done here.
So.
Probably water, now we need to bring in all this.
This is definitely, this is definitely a tool, um, from a maintenance perspective, not just the watering perspective, but the maintenance perspective, this is a very important tool for Public Works. I, it would be one of the first things I would go for if I was a Public Works Director in any place. It just can be used for many, many things. Um, and uh, and having it uh when you need it is, is very important.
And the tapping machine, if you'll notice around town, when they've had to dig something up, they're having to manually do it and that's why everywhere it is, she go like this, she go like this. Because they're, they're doing.
I, I agree with the tapping language, you know, going around watering, they say, and I think that we should do that.
And the water too, I mean, when it's important, when they're working on some of these, these roads and things, they need that water. They also need that water.
Correct, correct.
So I just wanna make sure that if we, if we approve this equipment, that this equipment is taken care of. That's another concern that I have, is that our equipment is not properly cared for.
This particular piece of equipment, I would like to look at on, on the, on the use side. Um, surplus from another municipality that may have one that's a few years old.
Water wagon.
Yeah, could a water wagon, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, okay.
So, Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes.
So, and do both of these items meet the technical requirements for Better Place Plan Fund spending? The equipment that's gonna last five years?
Yes.
Under test?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain motion, please.
What is the amount of the tank volume?
He wants um seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
So.
Um, I move that we approve purchase of reversible tamp and a water wagon for up to seventy-five hundred dollars from the Better Place Plan Fund.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I do wanna add one thing to that, just so you all know. We have seventy-two thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars under item three for equipment. This will bring us down to the mid-sixties uh after purpose, uh, we still have money left up.
Okay.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Herr Myers?
Aye. Okay, so approved.
Thank you. Uh, next item, I don't wanna get too excited on this one. This is for informational purposes only. I had to put out there, that out there first. We have been in discussions um with FPL on options to.
Topper on the fire truck.
Oh, did I jump? I jumped, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Chief.
It's easy for the chief. It's, it's easy to do. Just ask me, it's easy to do.
All right, so we're gonna be on E, discussion about the acquisition for fire apparatus. Um, Chief is here. Uh, last meeting, we discussed, uh, Chief and myself writing out number two Ocala uh to look at the company that had the truck. I told Chief I wanted him to come in and report to you where we were at in that process. There were a couple of things that came to light uh since that time, the NFPA nineteen hundred that I've been made aware of and I would like Chief to discuss that with you all. And uh, Chief, you have the mic.
Uh, just wanna catch everybody up on, on way fireworks works for informational purposes. We're governed by different things. Uh, NFPA sets all the standards for health and safety. That's the National uh Fire Protection Association. They govern all of our equipment, our gear, everything like that. We're also governed by state statute six thirty-three and Board of Administrative Code six ninety-eight. So we have to fall into these guidelines with everything. In doing research, uh, we have found out that per NFPA nineteen hundred, the frontline, so your first duty fire truck, life expectancy is only ten to fifteen years. At year fifteen, NFPA nineteen hundred recommends that truck is moved to a backup truck only. With that being said, our current truck, that is our frontline truck, is thirteen years old. So it puts us in a time restraint in a couple of ways, which I'll explain. Um, also the issue that we have with our current truck, it was produced from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and fifteen. Uh, our truck is in two thousand and twelve, so the company that was actually producing that model of truck no longer produces that model of truck. So it creates this, another issue, uh, like if something was to break or we were having mechanical failure, something like that, we can't repair it. Um, we can, if we can find the parts, we're there, you're part of it. Um, so due to the fact that it's not produced, due to the fact that we don't have two years of useful life in the truck per NFPA standard, I started looking into some things. Um, I also went, like he said, to the Matheny Company, um, in Ocala, their E one, it's a brand that builds, there's only about four brands that build fire trucks. That's the closest one to us. Um, they came and looked at our current truck and the condition it's in, they offered us a hundred and forty thousand dollars for our truck, the power equipment, just the truck. Um, likely for me, uh, another guy down there, so he cut us a break. That truck usually sells between eighty and a hundred thousand, so they're pushing it all out for us. Good news is, Ed Matheny currently sitting in Ocala, they have a fire truck ready to go. Um, the trucks, which, you know, I don't see any good numbers, trucks usually sell for one point three million. They took four hundred and thirty thousand dollars off the price of the truck instantly. Um, with that being said, he said he'd roll in the hundred and forty thousand on top for our trade-in, so it brings the price down even further.
And what's that price?
Uh, it would be with taxes and everything in the low to mid seven fifty-ish range. Why are you paying taxes?
Yeah, we don't pay taxes.
Oh, that's correct. I apologize. So with stickering and lettering and all this stuff. Seven hundred, eight hundred thousand, somewhere between seven hundred thousand. Good point, thank you for that. Um, so that also being said, uh, it creates a couple of time issues for us. The two time restraints we have. The two time restraints we have is we need to find an apparatus roughly ideally within the next two years. The other time restraint we have is that they have a truck built on the ground ready to go, and it takes, if we were to purchase one at a later date, roughly three years will push us past the point of our truck's life service. So creates some issues.
This is a truck, this is a truck that's brand new.
This one's brand new, yes ma'am.
So have we been looking at trucks that maybe were built in nineteen?
Yes ma'am.
Two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four?
Yes ma'am, I have that information for you here as well.
Okay.
Um, so I looked at new and used fire trucks. The, so this is a brand new truck, full warranty, everything comes with it. The used trucks come with issues. Um, the, you're gonna get a used truck that's gonna still have that shelf life of ten, fifteen years, so most of them have already been used for eight to ten years. And they're still in the price range of five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars. And they don't come with warranties or anything like that, they have mileage on them, we don't know what's wrong with them, if there's something broken, that's an added expense. We have to re-stick it, sticker it, relabel it, so it's almost, that was raffles with this specific apparatus. Um, the other issue um that we're gonna have is, like I said, it's one pushers to pass our time on it. They do have a couple of, so they give me two trucks, there's one that's there currently, this is all the information on it, and they have an additional truck coming out in June. Beyond this, it's three plus years for another truck rolls out. The one that's there currently, they're at eight hundred and seventy thousand right now before our trade-in. The one that comes out of June is, will be between one point three and one point five million. Um, beyond that, I can't find anything cheaper than that, I contacted all the other companies. And um so that's where we're at, that. The good news is, Matheny, because it's in Ocala, and um they build trucks from Florida State Fire College Tampa everywhere else, that's the reason they have an additional one, is they order them in bulk and then there's one left. They offered us a couple of payment plans. Um, the first one, if we were to purchase it, they offer a ten, twelve, and fifteen-year plan with an interest rate of four point nine to five point six, depending on where it is. For purchase, they also offer leasing, uh but leasing will depend on the time when we're actually down there to lease it, and I'm not sure how the trade would work on the lease. But they do offer that. They also offer in those plans, um they recommend an annual payment, but they can do quarterly, semi-annually, monthly, he said you could write it down anyway, we need it. To work with us uh as a city to purchase an apparatus. The good news is, all the equipment for the apparatus will just pull off of our current truck and transfer over, so as far as equipment purchases, we shouldn't have any. So that's the information I have for that.
So how many years would it take us to pay off of seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, well, like I said, it would depend if you did a plan, or you could do ten, twelve, or fifteen years, or you could do leasing. Um, the other good thing I forgot to mention is if we get the truck in December, they defer the first payment to the following December. So it's technically an entire year with the truck about payment. So that would allow us to find purchase.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
So I I heard you say that there's a standard that suggests that a truck be moved to secondary status when it attains a age of fifteen. But what are the consequences if you don't meet that standard?
Uh, if we don't meet the standard, it would be, so my understanding is, so this is coming from NFPA.
Real, real world though, I mean.
Correct.
And then I, and I don't mean to, uh obviously, just wanna make sure that as a small town with a budget that's very uh tight. Um, I understand it's great to have new equipment and have a dealt with fire departments for a few years, city manager at Black, I understand it, it's neat to have new stuff. But my question is, in a real world, functionally, what's what's the consequence if you, if you push that fifteen-year limit a little bit? I know City Black has a ladder truck that's like twenty-five years old, twenty, twenty-five years old. Now, it's reaching the point where I think that the cost of repairs, you know, outweighing its its the efficiency, but has an analysis been done of where you are, if you? They're giving you trade value on this old truck, that's, and you're gonna take the equipment off the old truck, so that tells me that the equipment's still functioning, or you wouldn't be putting it on a new truck.
Correct.
And 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 the trade value means that the truck itself has value, so i- is the truck not usable?
So let me back up and answer your first question. Um, if we push it, so NFPA sets our safety, so if we push that truck and something happens and it's still frontline unit and we don't have it marked as a spare or designated as a spare, kind of set to legal obligations on that point?
Well, helping with that though, I mean, it's nearly get open up to legal obligations if something happens, I don't care if it's a brand new truck.
That's, I agree. So like with our fire equipment, it has a set standard, it had like our jackets.
Fire jackets, I get it.
They can handle five hundred degrees or eight hundred degrees for however long.
Right.
If we knowingly go into a fire year that is expired, we personally can be sued or whatever else, so same with our fire apparatus. The difference is, if we have the new equipment and something happens, we're within guidelines within code with everything that's required by state Florida. Um, with that out of date or pushed past, we're willingly knowing that we are going past the point that is recommended or guideline by the state of Florida and we're pushing that to its end.
I get it, but you're telling me that you're taking the equipment off of that truck?
Correct.
You seem to me that the equipment is the part that is, you know, your your critical element of the truck. Truck's a platform that gets you a blood, to a blood pressure.
So our equipment gets replaced every ten years, just like our fire gear.
Okay.
Um, it has a shelf life, so all the equipment on the truck is new enough to see, the truck itself is where the problem is. So the equipment will be transferred over because it's all, we do hose testing, we do equipment testing, we get um servicing for our extrication equipment, all of that stuff comes off.
So so it's the platform that gets you to the scene and then your equipment helps you fight the fire?
Correct.
Well, trucks last one, I mean, big time trucks last a long time.
You take care of them, I have to agree with them.
Correct.
Quite a long time.
So I I'm not trying to.
Uh, no, I I I understand.
I'm just trying to ask some questions because I I understand.
This is a lot of money.
In the ideal world, you know, you buy a truck every few years, but you guys don't have a lot of, you don't have a lot of extra money.
And also, to answer your second question, you brought up the city. Um, the city, their ladder truck was not a first due response and it is being replaced currently, I thought it was detailed.
I know it is, I I get that. Um, but, and it's a ladder truck, and I understand they have that ladder truck because it helps them maintain a certain ISO rating, so.
Correct.
So do you, what is the ISO rating in your jurisdiction?
We will all honor that county at this point.
So the county's setting your ISO rating anyway?
Correct.
And the county is gonna be a, at least, a uh, an additional response team to 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 your folks. And and it's the county that's setting your ISO rating, which determines your insurance costs. So I'm just trying to, don't get me wrong, you're you're a fire chief and your job is to do what you're doing, and I'm not being critical of you at all, don't mean to take it that way. Your job is to do what you're doing, you're advocating for equipment that's gonna help your fire department operate at maximum level. Sometimes you can't afford to operate at maximum level, I'll just leave it at that, and I'll shut up then.
Commissioner DeVito?
Yes, and um Chief Fraser, thank you very much for this information, it has, um, this is my second term on the commission, and um I've always thought that our, our fire department budget was not really sufficiently integrated into the city budget. We don't have really long-range plans. I do have a question about the money that was supposedly set aside for fire truck. So this is very good information, however, um we, we cannot make a decision like this in a vacuum. This is in a, I mean, really, it is a very significant expense to agree with city attorney and Commissioner Burton. So thank you for that, but, well, I have one question. Um, and maybe this was um being hopeful, in the information sheet provided by the city manager, it said there might be grant opportunities to fund this truck?
Yes ma'am, so the problem I'm running into, there's a couple, there's appropriations that we can get from the state, we need grants. The city's received so much appropriations for the fire station and everything else.
Right.
No one's willing to give us a grant.
Okay.
Um, because of the amount of funding that we've currently received. Appropriations we could possibly get later, but as I was explaining, my concern is the.
So to to be accurate, um, we really do not have a possibility of grant opportunities from the state right now, and my state, you need state agencies.
As far as I know.
Right, because we've, we have received the grant for the fire station, and I understand how that would work. But I guess to the rest of the commission and the city manager, um, we, it's not a normal thing to negotiate with the head of one of our departments about how to make a significant expenditure like this. We would need to know um how this fits into our budget as a whole, which I think um would be very difficult. But I think that we need this to be fleshed out by our city manager and our finance director um to show us how we could possibly fund this. And if it's not feasible, then we need to come up with plan A, B, and C. Um, because this, this is a lot of money.
Go ahead.
And and that's why we're having this discussion now, um just to bring it to light, uh that this is something that we need to have on our target for the next couple of years. Uh, whether we're budgeting for it, or whether we're going after specific grants or appropriations, because the one thing that we can do is ask for this. And since we are spending a significant amount of money on a new facility, we we will be looked at at, you know, a little closer, that we need of the equipment to deliver.
I don't think that's how it works.
Did you, I I'm gonna miss tingle with the state, she had talked about those grants.
Yes ma'am.
Um, and she's, and now she's telling me that you wouldn't.
She, no ma'am.
Because she encouraged, um, she encouraged the application for for that, if you wanted a new truck. If we felt like we had a need for a new truck, for us to look at that.
Correct.
And I think first and foremost, that's the first thing we need.
That's the first thing we need.
Yeah, well, those are, those are appropriations, they're different than a regular grant, so grant wise, I can't get a grant. Appropriations are, I understand how they.
And that's what she would do, that's what, that's where that would run through.
Right, the, with that process though, just, like I said, just so we're all aware, it's gonna push us past our our timeframe, because even if we got the appropriations, say, two years from now. Then I I put in a purchase for a truck, and it's three years before the truck shows up.
Right.
Um, and we'll be past our NFPA standard of moving into a spare apparatus.
Is anything else over there past its lifespan? I mean.
No ma'am, the other equip, so all of the city equipment is up and running perfectly, the county equipment, they can rotate in and out because they're constantly buying and changing. It's just that one apparatus that belongs to the city, it is going to be out of date within the next year.
How old is the county's truck?
Um, one of them is, I'm gonna say it's seven years old, somewhere in that range, and I don't remember the other two.
And Mr. Primes, when he, um, in conversation with him, he he had, he had said that those, the vessels to get you there, the lifespan on them was much greater than.
Well, cause there's, they're not frontline for our department, they're, like I said, you can have them at the twenty-five years per NFPA nineteen hundred, that's not the problem. The problem is, what we are classifying for the city of Crest City, that is our engine, that is the city's engine, and it's a year thirteen.
Well, this is, I I have to agree with my, my, um, you know, the commissioners here is that, um right now, I don't, I don't see how we can, how we can, how we can do this. And this is a conversation, I think, that's gonna lead us into another direction, that um we need that, another workshop on this with the fire department, and where we're gonna go with our, you know, with the fire department. But um I I don't know that we have that funding, and the first thing I think we should probably do is, is look at the appropriations grant in this panel and find out, you know, what the chances of that, what the chances of that would be.
Sure.
Um, so I mean, that would.
As far as if we do a thirty-year or fifteen-year loan on that?
Thirty.
Fifteen-year loan?
Good numbers on that, I just, just wondering.
You're wanting annual payment?
Yeah.
Uh, eighty-five thousand, three.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, so who maintains that truck? In other words, had a motorhome freightliner maintain it, who who maintains your truck? As far as like, if you have something that has to be fixed, you take it to a big truck?
Correct. So we, we were taking it to, um, well, Chief Hyphel was taking it to Ocala to get maintenance, and we just got on the maintenance program with Keith, their fleet maintenance, or does our fleet maintenance here?
You, so you're doing your fleet maintenance in-house?
The maintenance program that Keith uses.
Over here at uh, at the office right behind us, Shepherd's.
Right.
Shepherd.
Shepherd.
They have a company.
That was in the manager's report, and I have a question about that, I'm not quite sure about about that.
It's not, not at Shepherd's, it's a different, um, I don't.
It's not Shepherd's, sorry. So what kind of platform is it on, is it on a freightliner, is it on, what what's the platform?
It's a Ferrari, you're true.
Okay, so, so my question is this, um, and again, I'm I'm just trying to explore some things, cause I know you're, but it's, what what's the possibility of of uh having someone who actually is knowledgeable about maintenance? I mean, you, it's it's a truck, it's got components like trucks or motorhomes, I understand it's very expensive, so are motorhomes these days, but, you know, there are folks who who are very well versed at maintaining the suspension and the, you know, the the engine and the drivetrains and all that kinda good stuff. Is there, and you're you're using somebody, just a local mechanic for that?
No.
No, no.
Well, I'm trying to find out who.
That's what he's saying though, is that he wasn't, but now with this Keith, I mean, is this our Keith?
Yes.
What's going on with that? I mean, that's, that's the question in the manager's.
The problem that's coming up is, like I, like I explained, the truck is so old, the parts and stuff are hard to find. So regardless of who you get to manage it, finding the pieces and parts to work on it. So, um, I wish I'd have brought it with me, I apologize, I don't have the paperwork.
No, sorry.
But Keith has a, a company that works on fire trucks, debris, and stuff like that, they actually come to the station and repair the.
They come on site.
So that we don't have to drive to Ocala.
We need to clarify, we need to clarify that, not the R Keith, so, okay.
No, no, it's, it's a, yeah, I have it at the station.
How many miles does that truck have on it?
That truck has just, it's about, I think it's got twenty-eight thousand on it.
Okay, so I know that's a special used vehicle and mileage is tough on it and that kinda thing, but is there some, is, there's gotta be somebody who's an expert who can say, okay, regardless of age, look at the mileage, look at the components, the truck is safe, it's not safe, it's, you know, it's gonna be fun, it's functional and likely gonna be functional for a while. Like you do with, you know, anything else, an airplane, a motorhome, a big truck, a car. Um, aside from the technical standards that I understand, you you were very, very well, you know, informed us about that, but aside from technical standards, I think the commission needs to know what they're dealing with in terms of the truck. You know, uh, I understand suspension components on a fire truck are probably given a lot of wear because you guys, it's, you know, it's brakes and all that kinda stuff, it's, you know, it's heavy, and you're put, you're usually under extreme conditions, and same with acceleration and braking and all that stuff. I'm just, it's a piece of equipment, I know it's red and it's got fire on it, and and that's cool, but it's a piece of equipment, I'm just wondering if somebody can give the commission a, you know, a functional assessment of the truck? The platform, not the equipment, cause you've already, you've already described that.
Sure. Yeah, the, like I said, the truck is functional, um, but just, I mean, further clarify what you're talking about. During the last, and this truck's running high, you know, it's got a steady motors, they move water, it's got a pump in the back, the motor has to operate, so everything's running high.
So you got hour, an hour meter as well, the hots meter as well as a, a, a.
Right. And then, you know, you got the truck that weighs thirty-two thousand pounds with a thousand gallons of water, eight point three three pounds per gallon, speedney up, sovereign, so your suspension, your brakes, your helpers, your, you know, all this stuff, even though it's got a little mileage, it's got a lot of wear and tear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then that comes back to the point where finding the parts to replace it because it's no longer needed becomes the issue.
Yeah, so make sure I'm not in any way advocating that you put somebody out there on a truck that's got a problem stopping or going, or susping with a suspension or anything like that. I just, I'm not an expert, they aren't experts, it would just be helpful if somebody could look at that truck and say, this is what we think you got out, left left on it, but with your your rate of use of twenty-eight thousand miles, that is thirteen years old?
Yes.
So, I mean, obviously that's less than two, two thousand or so miles a year, below over that.
I just, I have mine down on my car.
Yeah.
Okay.
But like, I agree, I understand it's different.
Yeah, I agree, it's different, and it's got, I don't know how many hours the engine has on it, but I understand it's, when it's sitting there, you got that engine revving up, pumping all your pumps and stuff, you know what I'm trying to get to, it's just.
And I think right now that, you know, we haven't, um, for us to do something like this, to consider this right now, we did not even put this into our budget.
Well, this is not anything but consideration right now, this is informative to allow, continue to allow Chief to work with the state and find any means that, you know, through grants or appropriations with the, where we got the the money before to see if we can continue to see if we can get a truck.
That's what we need to start with.
That's where we need to start with, well, that's not the presentation, the presentation was that we had.
We need to.
We have a payment plan, we have a payment. We have a payment plan, we have a payment plan, and we've got a truck out there that is available. And you always have to wonder, you know, you always have to think about this too, is when a company is discounting it over four hundred thousand dollars. You know, why, and that's the first thing that.
Well, the reason it was discounted, it was part of an org, so, a larger part like Crescent.
It doesn't matter, I, I, I understand. So there would go, I know there's a reason, but I just, right now, I think the biggest thing is that continue to maybe work with Ms. Tingle. And see what the possibility, what the possibility is.
And even if that appropriation takes from today, takes two years, okay, the truck still has, you know, two years left supposedly before whatever's gonna happen to it. If we can get an appropriation, that's really where we need to start, yes. You know, that's the important piece, correct?
Well, and this kind of trust do come up again.
Yeah.
You know, I know it's great, think that we have them right now, but there's really be other ones that are, you know, extras on the order, ones that are figured out in the weather, so. I mean, it happens rarely.
Commissioner DeBida, do you have a question?
Go ahead. Just a comment for my fellow commissioners. My concern is, based on what the chief has presented to us, is that we may find ourselves without a truck and out of compliance in two years. That would sound like what he was saying. So, one, what is.
But meanwhile, we have two years to save. Eighty-six thousand dollars a year.
No, I under, I understand that part and I made calculation myself.
Okay.
What has happened here, and that is unusual for me because I'm not good at that. What has happened here really is that we have had basically the equivalent of a staff meeting and a commission meeting. I mean, this is helpful information, but as the city attorney said, we're not experts on fire trucks.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know, I disagree, but this isn't a staff meeting, I know that he needs to bring this to us.
No, no.
For discussion, and now he knows how we all feel about it. And we're gonna send him out and say, we're not ready to purchase this, you go ahead and, and continue to look at appropriations and permits.
Okay, but we don't negotiate with our department heads, we need to look at all of these things in the context of the city budget. And number, number one, we still have the unanswered question. We got a response from our finance director that, yes, there was some amount of money set aside for a fire truck a number of years ago. And we do not know what happened to the money set aside, correct?
And that's part of, isn't that what we got back from what Commissioner DeBida reached out directly to our auditors on?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
I mean, I mean.
And where are we on that? Where are we on the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Steve, would you like, I mean, I can, I can, I can talk and then you can pitch in as well. So I had to ask staff to continue to look at this, looking at the history, what was, what was requested at that time. So it seems that between timeframe of 2013 and 2017, around that period, that the conversation had taken place on possibly taking this money into a set aside. There has never been, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but we've looked back at history, there's never been a line item specifically for a fire truck or money set aside into a line item for a fire truck. And Steve, you can take it from there, but that's, that's where we're at right now, sure.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Debbie Peacock and she said that there was a second cash account that money was supposed to be put into when it was available. But she doesn't think that there was ever like a specific two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars like set aside, ready to be done. She said there was just, whenever there was gonna be extra money, it would be put in there. And then when we went to pooled cash, everything kinda got mixed together.
And so, and didn't, my understanding, did somebody speak to, have you talked to Patrick Kennedy?
I personally did not, but it was our staff member, it was Keith, that had talked to, to Patrick Kennedy. And Patrick Kennedy said that he knows there was conversations, but that there was never an account. And this is third hands, what I'm being told from Pete, that there was never an account specific with money in it for a fire truck. It was discussion, a high-level discussion.
Okay, so there would always have to be in order to have that money set aside in the budget, there would have to be a line item somewhere in the budget to set that money aside.
Okay, my concern is that, no, there never was a line item, but it is on tape somewhere. Debbie Peacock sat right there and told the commission, then 2018, that there was a significant amount of money in a cash account set aside. We did our accounting differently then. So I guess what I'm saying is, it sounds very plausible to me that when we went to pool the cash, that that money was dispersed and basically somehow we spent money that wasn't really properly accounted for.
We could have a brown bag to go out the back door, what do you think?
Yeah, um, no, I think I would sincerely doubt that, which, based on the people who worked here, I hope it didn't. But that obviously is something that we would do our best to account for. But moving forward, we have a significant issue with the fire truck. I think it needs to be looked at in the context of our whole budget. And, you know, we do have to be cognizant of the fact that better placed money, one of the primary purposes of it is for police and fire vehicles. So I'm just saying, we're not experts on fire trucks. And also, we need this foot in the context of our whole budget. In the event that we do not receive a grant or appropriation, which seem, you know, there, it's a, it's a long shot. The state's saying they don't expect as much money in going forward as they have now. So I don't know, just, we, we need the big picture on that here.
Okay. Okay, so please, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
All right. I'm gonna get that one to it, I apologize.
And this is the one you said not get excited about?
Do not get excited about this one all, I just wanted to put this out there because this is a great opportunity for the city. And right now, we're just still working through what the costs are. These, this number F, item F is for FPL, FPLO, LED lighting solutions, this is for Central. This is part of our master plan, this is things that have been discussed for a long time. These options here are the options that staff is putting forward for us to, at least right now, look at. No decision needs to be made. I'm going to bring the cost and, and a report, executive report to you all once I finalize with FPLO. Because they have not provided us the final cost. I, I just wanted to bring it up to show you that these are the items and eventually we're gonna have to have a workshop to have a discussion to choose as a, as a, as a body, which ones that we're gonna go with.
And this would replace all the lights down Central, all the way down to the light.
All of the lights, I believe it's twenty-eight lights. Yes, ma'am.
And to the other, sure.
Yes.
And, and to, and, light to light.
Light, light to light.
Now, I have been told that the only cost that's incurred to us is in the labor or contracted cost to run new conduit. They would provide the conduit and the wire, we would have to provide the company or the subcontractor that would be able to directionally drill that pipe. That is the only cost, the offset, we'll have LED lighting, so there's a savings. But basically, we pay through our billing, and this is how this is done.
And these would all be done through the billing? And so they're gonna get you a comparison as to what we pay now and what these would cost and the difference for that.
I'm waiting on it as we speak.
Okay.
Yes.
And these would be concrete poles?
Correct, concrete poles.
And they would not, yeah, instead of what we're dealing with now with the fiberglass and the.
Yes, yes, you are correct.
And they might stand straight, correct?
Yes. No leaving towers.
Okay, so you're gonna come back to us?
I am, I am, and, and I'm hoping to have a full report for you for the December meeting, so.
Just commissioners, do you have any questions on this before we move on?
I was just mentioning that in this, in, I think it was the, the UF plan that they did for Central Avenue. They had done, they looked at historical pictures and what we had, it was more like the acorn light that was hanging from our arm than what we have now. And so if we wanna be historical, we had, we wanna go in that direction.
Or the teardrop, didn't you see, yeah, teardrops.
Yeah, the teardrop or looking at the whole fantasy, it had like a big shade around it and that light in the middle, I don't know if that, that sounds right to you guys, but. Um, it would be better, I mean, the lights we had now are kind of weird that they just stick their light up. Why are we lighting it up? Would you be lighting the street, to the street? That's just my feeling.
Patrick Kennedy said years that those were the acorn lights were the wrong light. So I, I don't know, I don't remember seeing this in the, we don't really have a master plan, we have a CRA plan. I don't remember seeing this in the most recent CRA plan.
Most recent, most recent, it was the, the UF one.
Right, it, no, I mean, I don't see anything about replacing the lights in the CRA plan that we adopted. But you're saying we wouldn't be paying for it from CRA dollars?
No, we would not.
But would we be running new cable under the street?
The only cost, it would be under the street, it would be in the right of ways. And the, and the only cost to us, and we don't know what that is at this time, would be for directional drilling of new conduit. They would provide the conduit and they would provide the wire. We would just have to provide the labor to put it in the ground. And I, and I don't know what that cost is at this point.
Right, so what the new CRA plan does provide for, at least it shows, is new landscaping on Central Avenue. So would, would running the wires mean that we could not have any additional landscaping on Central Avenue?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, not at all. These are closed conduit and, and it all sealed, when you run the directional drill, everything is sealed, so.
And it would also allow for us, because none of, none of those outlets, they don't have any outlets that work down there.
Correct.
Up and down the street.
We can tap into that.
So with us trying to enhance Central Avenue and to invite new businesses and people there, it would be nice if it looked.
Once I get the information, I'll email you all and then we can discuss individually, setting up a workshop and what works best with everybody can discuss it further.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the next.
Any other questions on the LED lights?
Sorry.
No?
Okay.
All right, our next item is impact fees and effects on the city. This is something that's really important, I wanted to bring up to your attention. The new impact fees in Putnam County Florida are poised to directly affect homeowners and businesses in Crescent City through increased development cost, which likely translate to higher housing prices and potential impact viability of new commercial projects such as our incoming Dunkin' Donuts. I do have and passed around to you all this letter that was given to us from John Griffey, which is the owner of Dunkin' Donuts. I can read it or mayor, if you'd like to read it, we can discuss what he had written.
I think, I, I asked you to put this on the agenda, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda. In meeting with the mayors recently, and I think I shared this a little bit, and we might wanna have a workshop, we might wanna have this for a workshop. The county, I guess, when they were going through the implementation of their impact fees, they did not realize that, my understanding is they did not realize these apply to municipalities, to the municipalities, until either right there at the end or after the fact. And so all of these, and if you'll look at the, if you'll look at the rate sheet on the back, Palaca, I believe, and Dawn, you can probably speak to this better, they have impact fees, correct? And so if, if the municipality has impact fees, that overrides the county's impact fees. But otherwise, they're placing these same county impact fees on the other four municipalities who do not have impact fees. So the mayors have, have talked about this and, and have, and, and there's some, some significant concern, especially as we're trying to invite new businesses in that possibly the mayors join together. But of course, I can't do any of that until this commission, you know, approves that, that we join together and start the discussions as a group with the county as to, as to what we can do. And so when you look at from Mr. Griffey, who is looking at doing the Dunkin' Donuts here, I guess he has put in, in there that he just paid thirty-one thousand dollars in impact fees in St. John's County. And, and most counties have impact fees, if not all counties have impact fees, but most of them do have some sort of an impact fee. And it's to prepare for further growth. And you can't use it for loan payments, you can't use it for maintenance, there's some stipulations on impact fees. But he said that was to build a new Dunkin' in Hastings, and that building is seventeen hundred square feet. Based on the master fee impact schedule here in Putnam County, has decided that a fast food restaurant impact fee is fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot or fifty-two thousand dollars per thousand square feet for a drive-in restaurant, for a drive-in facility. And that returned his thirty-one thousand that he paid in St. John's County to eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars he would pay here in Crescent City, in addition to his build-out costs. And he said that would certainly make the decision to stay in St. John's if he's correct about the fee calculations. I had, I've had extensive conversations with Zach, who, who was instrumental in this. Is that Baker with the county? And I've, I've talked to him extensively about this and, and asking basically what was their thinking with, what was their thought process with this? And they placed some of these, I mean, if you look at, if we were to build a clinic, which would probably be more of an urgent care facility, per thousand square feet, that's eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. Per thousand square feet.
I have a question, yes. Okay. So when you say the, the proposal is the cities will band together and ask the counties what you could do, but then you mentioned Palaca already has an impact device. So can you clarify for me, if the city has an impact fee, do the county's fees apply also?
No, I just said that, they supersede.
They su, the city's.
So municipalities would supersede the counties.
Okay, so, what if?
So our only other option is that we do an impact, we couldn't do anything until we did an impact study. So we'd have to have an impact study. And I've asked Mr. Martin to give us a price for that. We're talking, and, and possibly the last time we talked about it upwards of about a hundred thousand dollars.
Didn't cost that much in Palaca.
Huh?
Did not cost that much.
Okay, how much, was it seventy?
Thirty-three, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five thousand for the impact fee study we did.
Well, then that's much better for us because the last time we had this discussion, I think that's what it came back anywhere from seventy to a hundred thousand dollars.
Depends on who you ask and, you know, if you'll pay it, they'll ask for it.
And like, mayor, if I could, because we had, when Mr. Rudd was here, we discussed the possibility of impact fees.
And there's a number of different companies.
So one question I have, thank you for being so proactive on this. One question I have is, I mean, well, a first observation, it certainly seems that it would be more beneficial for Crescent City to set our own impact fees and to receive the benefit of those impact fees.
Exactly.
That, and, so because the county would have to, I, I don't know, they had a study done.
They did have a study done.
Right, I'm saying, so they must have arrived at their impact fees through a study. So it seems like that might be a more difficult initiative to get carried through, to get the county to change their impact fees.
Well, they can't. I don't know that they can, I don't know that they can, except for an interlocal agreement. And if you look in this, it requires them to have an, an interlocal agreement with each municipality, a participating municipality with an interlocal agreement.
So my question is, what are the consequences of opting out of the county's impact fee? For instance, you just heard when you talked about fire trucks. You're depending on the county right now for your ISO rating.
And we are.
You got a truck, and I know everyone likes to have their own truck, they like their own police department, all that good stuff. Fact of life is, you're dependent upon the county for your fire protection, by and large. That's why your ISO rating is based upon the county, not you. So my question is, what happens if you opt out of the county's impact fee? Do they say, okay, no problem? Now, you figure out how with your impact fee, you're gonna take care of all these functions? That's my question, I don't know the answer right now.
And, and we don't need it until we have that discussion with them, I think, and find out what their, what, what their thinking is and, and what their thoughts would be on this. But I think we need to open up that discussion. Now, as a homeowner, if you, if you remodel your home or you add an extension to your existing home and it still stays, stays that single family, there would not be an impact fee. And right now, they're saying that our impact fee is going to be the same as what it is in the county. Now, they can use that and on transportation and parks and rec have to be used for that and they set aside the St. John's River. So anything, anything that comes in for that would be used either on the east side of the St. John's River or on the west side of the St. John's River. But this is just, I think, a conversation that we need to have and that's why I said maybe we need to workshop this to see because because the same thing goes for, and, and what I was getting at before you asked your question was, with Zach is, is, with some of these fees being the way they are and with knowing that we are, we are desperate for economic vitality and bringing businesses into the community, what was the thinking? And he said their thinking was, is that if to use up the buildings that are currently established, okay, for them to build out those, those buildings that are currently established, there's some incentive there, because, um, if it's the same use, there are different factors. Dawn, you can probably speak better to this, if it's the same use, same footprint, then there is definitely a reduced cost, if even a cost. Um, but if you expand that, if you change the use of it, then they have to go in and, and figure out what that impact fee cost would be.
Okay.
So there's, I mean, there's a, there's a lot to it, um.
It really is.
So essentially, well, it seems like it would be beneficial to get whatever they wrote to report to the commission. Um, I certainly appreciate all the work you've done, and I think that, um, we need to look at several options, including the one they proposed to join with the other cities and have a discussion with the county. My question also is, um, we could look, I mean, I guess, in the context of what if you find out with the other cities, um, perhaps we should look at our own impact fee. And I understand, um, that's a, a good logic to try and do in fill before you meet up, um, you know, vacant property. Is it possible? I don't know. Um, maybe our city attorney can speak to this. If all of the municipalities in South Putnam, you're talking about in South Putnam or?
No, Interlock too, Interlock is, yeah.
Right, if all of the municipalities are, maybe are interested in having their own impact fees, do we, can we join together and hire firm, or does that have to be done absolutely separately?
Well, I don't, I don't know, the, the, the whole idea of the study is it has to, you have to have measurable criteria for determining your number of, the, the amount of the fee.
Right.
And so I would suspect that the impact in Crescent City is different than the impact in Interlock and on the infrastructure and, and, I mean, they got a four lane running through, you don't, they have sometimes, you don't now, you know, the whole nine yards. And that would be the thing, uh, but some of the basics might be, uh, you know, some of the, some of the basic information, uh, might be easy to, for, for a, for a firm to sort of use and cross-use. I don't, I don't know, we have to get that. What we did was put out an RFP and had, interviewed a couple of different firms and, you know, the county's, the city had a, they have a different, they just, they had already had a water sewer fee, maybe county did too. But they've added now, uh, additional for, you know, various things. And as I said, my, my first question would simply be, what happens if you opt out? Uh, are you on your own on some of these things? And that's gonna be a big, a big, big deal for you.
And that's gonna be more the fire, I think the fire than it is anything, because right now, it's like I brought to their attention, we are opted out on, on water and sewer, and I think the only ones that are not is like East Palaca. I think it's applied in East Palaca because they do have water and sewer. So they did opt us out because we have our own water and sewer. Um, I brought to his attention that we also are already paying the sheriff's department to act as our police department, and that includes the car maintenance, um, which is part of an impact fee. Um, he said they were not aware, he was not aware of that, and, you know, might have to take that into consideration. I asked Commissioner Newbold to get for us, um, a white paper, basically, to break it down for us so that we would have a better understanding of the impact. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know where we go with this, Dawn, it, it was just one of those things that, that it's placed upon us now and like the charities to the street development. You've got thirteen homes going in there, and that's kind of been held up because of the septic and sewer. Well, now they would come under that. And to, they, a developer can come in, they can get credits by offsetting properties or something that they value to us. But for us to offset anything, you still have to, once those impact fees are in place, you still have to make up the difference. So it would be, if we were to ask somebody to come into our community and they ask us to weigh those impact fees, we would have to pick up that cost, or the county, we'd have to split that with the county.
It's a complicated question.
It is.
I mean, the, the needed response is to say, oh, no, we, we don't want impact fees, and that'll make people come in. But just, just recently, we looked at an agreement, an MOU regarding extension of some water lines, and they were talking about reserving capacity. Well, um, that's what your impact fees are for, is to help you increase capacity so that you can accommodate new growth. Otherwise, if you use up all that capacity, water plants, sewage treatment plants, cost a whole bunch, a month. And if, if the new growth isn't what paid for it, then the existing taxpayers are going to, or else your growth's gonna be stopped anyway.
Right.
So from my perspective, it's a complicated question. I certainly understand not wanting to pay impact fees. Uh, I do think that that point about existing buildings, that's probably the most effective way you have of getting existing buildings back in play. Because otherwise, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do that sound good about making people fix up buildings, but the fact is, if they're on demand there, you know, for service, most landlords and property owners aren't gonna go spend a bunch of money fixing a building and put that up, get a rent and get a return on it. So that whole idea of the, of avoiding an impact fee and, and, and basically encouraging people to use existing buildings, it's valid. I think, in my, but again, it's complicated, and I've thought about it a lot, and I still don't have, don't, I don't think I've got the one and only opinion. I just, I do think it's complicated and more complicated than just to say that we don't want them, 'cause that.
And I don't think we can say, I, I don't think we can say that, because.
I didn't mean y'all, I mean in general, yeah.
Because that monies, all these monies that are being spent here, we don't know, those monies are not necessarily gonna come back to us. So if we got our own impact fees, at least it would be managing power streets. I don't, you know, because right now, he said, this goes to their street to, you know, to the county roads. And I said, well, the only one we've got is three oh eight out here, that's a county road, um, that that would apply to us.
Yeah.
Um, and he says, you know, and, and so that's something I think we need to have this discussion, and.
Oh, you, you bring up a great point, I mean, I, and I'm not trying to say yes or no, 'cause I don't, I have a lot of thoughts about it both ways. But I just, I think that it's really important for you to understand the consequences of opting out, and I don't know those consequences, I don't know.
I don't even think we can, I don't think, I don't think at this point in time we can. I think the bigger conversation is, when the county commission places something like this on us, that, that they possibly need to make sure that we're all made aware of it prior to them doing that. And, and that's a conversation, I think, where the mayors are with this right now, that to catch us by, you know, after the fact and not even bring us into the conversation. If, 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 say, Aldi comes in, and Winn-Dixie does want to build, or Walmart Marketplace wants to build, that's about thirty-eight thousand square foot is their average, Publix is a, their average is over forty. You're looking at ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars per thousand square feet. That's a four hundred thousand dollar cost that would be incurred for us to get possibly a full, another full-service grocery store in here. And those are some concerns that, you know, as we're trying to.
It's, it's all valid. I will also tell you that when I was at the city and we were trying to understand where all of our police budget was going, forty percent of our calls were at Walmart, primarily shoplifting. Um, so, I mean, there's a whole lot to think about. An eighty thousand dollars sounds like a lot for Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know what Dunkin' Donuts generates in revenue in a month, I know when the line gets a road, and, so I don't, I don't know, and I'm not.
And developers, I think, know that this is often, this is often the cost of doing business, they have it throughout the county.
And maybe, maybe the, uh, you know, I, I don't understand, you know, why, the wide disparity between what St. John's charges and Putnam. I mean, that sounds like a really valid talking point. I, if you say, yeah, we understand we gotta pay something, but why we gotta pay twice while we pay it in St. John's? And that's why I said it's, I don't think I have enough information to talk about it really from an informed perspective, except to say that I, I, in Palaca, you know, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of reluctance to work with it. Then we had a study done, and it showed us what we were looking at in terms of our infrastructure and, you know, pipes underground from eighteen eighty and streets that need repairing and using up the capacity in your water. And my goodness, the cost of a, of a, of a sewage plant is absolutely amazingly high. And you look at that and you say, well, we're gonna get growth slower, stop one way or the other, either we build in some way of paying for expansion, or we run out of capacity and then it stops anyway. And then, so, I just, but, but your point's well taken, and quite frankly, I didn't know that it applied to municipalities unless the municipalities, uh, I, I thought they didn't have their own, 'cause I wasn't part of, I didn't keep track of what they were doing, really, didn't have a reason to. But, um, yeah, I, I didn't know that it applied automatically to you guys.
Yeah.
The counties, I think.
It, yeah, it, it, they didn't, I guess, they didn't realize it even until, until they said, you know, after the fact. But, and that was a question I asked too, is that if we were to do our own impact study, could we, is there any way to save money? We could, we could piggyback on, we could piggyback on what was already done for the county.
Could you?
So I don't know, that question hasn't been answered yet. That was another question that I had, um, could we piggyback onto that?
That's a good question, too.
To save us some money. So anyway, um, it's food for thought, everybody, uh, probably, um, I don't know what direction y'all want to go, or if you want to, yes.
Um, I think I would like to move that we authorize you to move forward to continue your inquiries, um, either individually with the county or in conjunction with, um, other interested municipalities in Putnam County. Um, and to bring it back to a square in mind, so we can think about what to do about the situation.
I don't think the commission authorized her, that's her job.
Well, I'm saying, we're giving, she's asking, and I'm.
If I speak out, if I speak out, you know, I'm, I, I, so I just didn't wanna do anything, I just wanted y'all to know, it's a conversation, um.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna check into it a little bit too, if we represent Interlock and Kamona and you, and quite frankly, nobody's raised this point, I haven't heard it since I.
It surprises me, the mayor, he is, he is, he is not happy.
The mayor raised it tonight, they had their meeting tonight, so, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we do wanna go ahead and give authorization to this study? So, can I motion to authorize the mayor of Crescent City?
Right, I had a motion to be just second.
Oh, okay, I'm sure it was out.
That was my motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move on.
Correct, and I do wanna add one thing to that, Dunkin' Donuts said they are coming to Crescent City, don't worry, they won't be here, so.
And thank him for doing the comparison for us.
Yes, I will do that.
Let's go on to our special meeting request for a city manager evaluation.
Okay, so this is just a cut out of the contract, um, per the contract, uh, there's a first six-month evaluation that has to take place. Um, I've attached, and I'm not sure, and I apologize, is what I can find. I attached an example of the previous evaluation, um, that was utilized for Charles Rudd. I don't know if that's the proper six-month evaluation or a year, if they're all the same, I don't mind. Either way, uh, I would like to know what I'm doing right, what I'm doing wrong, and we can set up a time, and, uh, and that's what this line items for.
Okay. I remember when we did this, he had two different ones, and I remember when we did this one, and I, I actually, I like this one, the, this one was.
Pretty thorough, just, pretty thorough.
Pretty thorough and e- and easy to, um, to work with. So we need to set up, um, if everyone's in agreement, we need that first. If you're in agreement with this performance evaluation to use, and then we need, um, to set up a special meeting prior to the December second date. So, so we're gonna look at the evaluation?
Yes.
Is everyone, can I have a motion for us to use this as the evaluation, or is there something different? I need something here from you all.
I move that we use the evaluation from the performance city manager to evaluate our current city manager.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll provide it too.
Who wants to provide it?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion on that?
Would like to add one thing, um, and again, I don't mind, I'm down with whatever you all wanna do, but part D of the contract says that the city and the city manager shall mutually agree to the evaluation process that will be utilized. The process at minimum shall include a, a written evaluation prepared by the city. Number two, an opportunity for parties to meet and discuss, which we're talking about. And number three, a presentation by the city of a written summary of the evaluation results. The, the formal written evaluation shall be delivered, uh, within thirty days of the evaluation meeting. And it just says on here, if it's a, a fairly ready commission to conduct an annual review, it's, it's not a breach of the contract.
Okay, are you in agreement, are you in agreement with this evaluation form that you provided to us?
I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement, Mayor.
Okay.
You said, I'm in the con- that's.
Well, I know, I know, but.
Yes, no, I just, I just wanted to read it and say, well.
But they have to be in agreement with the performance evaluation form, so.
Okay. Um, and I think is that the way we did it previously, um, we filled, we filled out our forms, um.
We do fill out a form?
And you turn them into, um, the clerk, and then the clerk came over to me, and I tallied them.
You tallied them.
I tallied them and reported the finding.
Right, so, um, and that seemed to work fairly well?
Yeah, but, I, I mean, I.
You're willing to do that again? Um, so before December, I don't know, I looked at my calendar. And also, don't we have a request to meet with G U?
Yes, they're available after the seventeenth of this month.
So December second is a Tuesday.
So if everyone wants to look at the week before Thanksgiving, where is everybody? Um, next week, does that give you enough time? I don't know that you'd wanna run it into Thanksgiving. Um, the only other thing is we meet on December the first, which is the Monday following, um, the Thanksgiving holiday.
Um, as far as I know, I could meet Monday the first. I'm also, I'm available to meet Monday the twenty-fourth or Tuesday the twenty-fifth. That would give us a week to do, um, to do our evaluations and get them in.
Okay.
I'm perfectly, I don't know.
I'm available, I'm available on the twenty-fourth, what does everybody else look like on the twenty-fourth?
I don't like being on the twenty-fourth.
Um, sorry. I'm not like that.
Tuesdays are much better.
Well, then it would have to be Tuesday the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
She said Tuesday, I'm gonna go today, I just think.
You're good on the twenty-fifth?
Aye.
Yes, Commissioner, I mean.
We have tree garden, ten AM now.
At ten AM, so it has to be after that.
That's right. Can we meet the afternoon?
Uh, what is your schedule for the? Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and plan it for the twenty-fifth. Let's do it at, say, one-thirty, is that good?
Sure.
On Derek's evaluation.
Is it a special meeting?
Yes, this is a special meeting, this would be a special meeting. Contend, what we, um, I, I do need for this evaluation, we need to vote on the evaluation. All in favor of the evaluation form, we have a proper motion in a second, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, so that's the evaluation form we're going to use and approved also by the, it will probably take place, but Katie can be very, Katie's usually very flexible. If we tell her two-thirty, but it's two-thirty-five.
Right.
Then that would be, I think you would be.
Would you all care if I told them three o'clock? And just three o'clock, if that may give us a little break in between?
I was gonna say, I, I would probably like to benefit from a break, and probably our city manager might benefit from a break, I don't know.
Okay, so three o'clock, you would tell them three o'clock, and that's going to, I believe that should also be a special meeting and not a workshop, just in case we have to make any decisions or give any directives.
Okay.
Is that in agreement, everyone's in agreement with that, okay?
Yes, we'll have that advertised properly there, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So let's move on to, we've taken care of that, you've got on here a special meeting, uh, discussion in that day of utility services and sidewalk repair.
Yes. So I've got a couple of issues, um, just from regular business, meeting the public, going out at, to sites, uh, and just doing work with Keith. Um, we're gonna start out with utility repair. It was brought to my attention that the current code that we have, and I provided the code, section thirty-two forty-two, maintenance plumbing system. section thirty-two forty-two maintenance plumbing system, that the existing code places the entire responsibility for maintaining, repairing and cleaning the water and the sewer pipes at the connection of the property owner to the main. The problem is, we have a lot of mains that run down the center of the street and not necessarily in the right of way. This puts, this puts the owner responsible for digging the road up, replacing the pipe or connecting to our main pipe, and also replacing the base work and the asphalt, as well as any curving work that may have to be done or sidewalk repair as well. So what I'm asking is that we can take a deeper look at this. I would like to look at what other municipalities have. I know that in where I come from before and what I've been working under before is that the city provides a lateral that is proper material. Right now, the laterals that we have were probably placed about forty to fifty years ago. It's called orangeberg, which is basically compressed paper and tar. And this is literally for sewer and they've used it for storm as well in certain places. But it's meant its life expectancy. And if we don't plan for this and properly take care of this, we have a lot of homeowners that are going to be incurring a lot of cost. I'd like to see if we can change this code.
Yeah, many of us are very well aware of this.
Okay, okay.
Some of us are not, but many of us are.
And I'm not asking for a decision tonight on what the language is. I'm asking for you all to allow me to come up with that language, working with staff, and propose it at December, at our December meeting.
Right, but don't we also have to look into the cost to the city? I mean, that's always been an issue, the city is operated by putting that cost on the homeowner.
Correct.
So, you know, we just had a discussion about our budget.
Correct.
So can you come back with costs as well?
Yes, and it's gonna have to be a multi-tiered approach. And it's gonna have to be looked at in regards to a larger CIP plan and something that's gonna take place years to come. We're gonna have to plan for and maybe section out places in the city, areas in the city that need it the most or have the issues of that orangeberg pipe. That's the first thing. The second is another one that's even more alarming to me in the sense of our liability. And I talked to our attorney about this, and that's our section sixty or twenty-six seventy-three. This is our construction and repair sidewalks. We, it's a duty of the property owner, procedure upon failure of owner to act. And that is our sidewalks twenty-six seventy-three. We place the burden on sidewalk maintenance and repair on the shoulders of the private property owners. This has caused us to have a different look of sidewalks around the entire city. If you look around, they're, they're not uniform. There's a lot of areas that are unsafe. The biggest question is, again, when it comes to cost, how much can we take care of per year? And how can we plan for moving forward in the future? But I believe that we could, we could do that if it's properly planned. The other thing is that we're liable for these areas that are in the right of way. If someone were to hurt themselves, we could be sued. It doesn't matter what our code says, if it's a property owner's responsibility. There are some that are on private property that, that are issues. And that needs to be taken care of by the owner. But if it's in the right of way, I think it's our responsibility to take care of the safety issue.
The way it reads, wouldn't it be the, somebody stepped on a sidewalk that they shouldn't have, right? Doesn't it kind of read that since I always have, because I'm the owner of, you know, the house, you know, behind the sidewalk, right? And it's trip and fall and put your head and go to hospital. It almost reads like if I didn't maintain that sidewalk, that it would be my fault. Can I, can I read it that way, Don?
Then you're gonna both get sued.
Everybody get sued, yeah.
Yeah, there's a problem, you got a problem.
Okay, fair, can I say something? I've looked at this ordinance for years and tried to figure out exactly what it means. I noticed, I think it dates from nineteen fifty-eight, do you ever done that? And I, I think I looked into this a little bit. I'm not sure that the difference in the appearance of the sidewalk is because they're put in by the homeowner or not. I think it's the different times they were put in. Because, for example, when the multi-use trail was put in, the sections of that are different. The mayor noticed that at the time. One thing that I looked at when I was just looking into this in general was some cities require the homeowner to pay half. That's an option in some cities. I think the city of Crescent City is supposed to have control over the appearance and the style of the sidewalk. Donna's nodding his head.
Sure.
Why, I think that we have that, but I, I do think it's a burden. I think it's, I think we've put more of the burden in Crescent City on the homeowner. Obviously, we don't have a lot of money to repair sidewalks. Usually, we don't do them historically unless it's a CDVG grant or the multi-use trail. And the one thing that I've never known is there's a line in that ordinance. I'm not looking at it right now because I can't find it here. That says the city shall designate certain streets. And I don't know, BJ historically or Dawn legally, does that mean if the street has a sidewalk, then the city designated it? Or do we need to affirmatively designate those streets?
I have to see the wording.
It says, shall on the duty of the city commission to designate certain streets or parts of streets where sidewalk shall be constructed and maintained at the expense of the owner of the real estate belonging, which such sidewalk shall be made, constructed and maintained.
So, and trust me, given the lateness of the hour, I'm not asking for an answer to that right now. I just, I think the city manager has raised a good issue because our, our sidewalk ordinance is quite old and it probably could use updating. And it sounds to me like it could be a little more clear.
I think that your point is well taken, though, that the proper and probably most appropriate way to go forward would be to have the homeowner contribute, have the city be responsible for the construction. That way you, you have some control over uniformity of construction specs and, and also, you know, the actual just technique and, and quality. But that, that ordinance does sound like it's way outdated. I don't know how you're gonna enforce it either, quite frankly, unless you're gonna bring a code case or something against the homeowner. I don't know what you're gonna do.
Obviously, we haven't.
Yeah.
And then we've got, like at the end of the eucalyptus, the gentleman down there, he's, every time I'm running down there, he, he's out, he shows it to me. It gets worse and worse, and that's from the garbage trucks running over it, you know? And so that's not his, it's at the end of his property and it is, it is, it's crumbled. But that's the garbage trucks and from the nursing home, those big delivery trucks. And he watches it happen. And then we would be asking him to do that. Don, is there something, a mechanism when we say that we would split the cost? Is there something in, in the taxing? I know, I know, like, an example, somebody did a seawall for nineteen homes and they built that over time into their, into their taxes.
Well, they might have done something like an MSBU or an MSTU, I don't know. It's gonna be problematic. I don't know if you'll get complicated enough to do something for garbage fee, but you know, the first problem you've got is, you've got probably different conditions of sidewalks all over the town. Some need repairs, some don't, I guess. And to now go back out there and selectively decide that this homeowner needs to come up with half of the cost of repairing this one, but this homeowner doesn't. There's a practical, practical issue there as well. For sure.
Okay.
And I know that in a city down in Valaca, and I just keep using that as an example because I track what they're doing, they're requiring all new construction to include the cost of the sidewalk. So even if the sidewalk doesn't go anywhere, which, you know, that, you can imagine how that goes over. But, you know, they're requiring it, that they're in front of the, the right of way, in front of the home, along the street, they're requiring a sidewalk to be installed at the cost of the homeowner.
Well, DOT was, and we had to have that way with lot sites. And that was a sidewalk that goes.
Nowhere.
From nowhere to nowhere, you know? And possibly if they expand to a four lane there, you know, it could be lost to that too, so.
I think they're good issues and I think it is worthwhile bringing something back to us.
Yes.
I will be doing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, let's move on to our city manager's report. Do you have anybody in going for the city manager's report?
Any questions? I have two questions and I think the city manager has two questions. And one is much more important than the other. The one being the tree grant. The purchasing, you mentioned to me that with bids and unique sole source.
Correct, so I'm glad you brought that up. And I was gonna get that, get to that since we're here on my report. So as part of the report and a request that was made before we had gone out for, for bid, we put together an RFP. So we talked about this last time, making sure that we were doing the right process. I felt uncomfortable even with the state grant representative saying, don't worry about it. But, don't worry about it, but at the same time, do what you got on your books, because that's what we're looking at. So we put out a proper RFP. I've got zero bites on it. And I'm asking permission to sole source, to go directly to a company and just get the quotes and, and purchase these trees.
And that's on the trees?
Yes, ma'am, on the fifty, on the, on the thirty-five trees, the five thousand dollars.
So my understanding is that you'd already, that the Tree and Garden, they had already talked to, did you make those companies aware down in Pearson?
We did, through the Tree and Garden. And some of them said they didn't want to bill after they already gave us a price. I have not called them myself, but what I'm asking permission to do is just reach out to them myself, make sure that we get the best one. The concern I have, the biggest concern, of course, is making sure that we get the quality of tree that we need. And I believe that we have resources in the Tree and Garden Board that can possibly help out with that. But we have to get this done and I would like to get plans in the ground within the next two weeks. So I'm just asking permission to move forward to solicit directly instead of the RFP, because we got no bites.
And so my question is, my question would be to Dawn, through this, if you were to get, just like with us, when we get different quotes for painting a building, is it possible that he could go to three different companies and get quotes for that?
So what's your purchasing orders require? Is there a threshold that, above which you have to get written bids? Or, you know, most, most municipalities have a threshold of twenty-five thousand dollars or something that require written bids and below that you can do, above five thousand, you can do three telephone calls. Do you have anything in your ordinance that effect?
I believe so, I believe that's what we have. There is a low, a low, this, this meets a low requirement.
So follow your purchasing order, so if you can make three telephone calls and get three verbal bids, then fine. If that's where your threshold is, is it five thousand? Is it five thousand you said? No, but that's your spend.
One thousand for him to be able to spend. He can't spend over the one thousand. There's a lot of confusion always with that. But that's what he's allowed, he can't spend without authority over the one thousand. I don't know that, where does the charter speak to it directly?
It says, upon approval of the city commission, the following expenditures may be made without competitive bidding. All expenditures, including expenditures for real personal property acquisition not exceeding one thousand dollars. Expenditures for salaries and contracted personal services. And expenditures for work done in the operations of any city department. And expenditures for parts, supplies and materials necessary to make emergency repairs, blah, blah, blah. So seven hundred thousand dollars you gotta do.
That's, that's a low threshold, that probably needs to be changed too.
We tried.
You tried.
Well, the, it's went to the, it was the balance.
Oh, that's in your charter.
That's in our charter, okay. I know it's. Yeah, could, the issue seems to be, and without, they can't, the charter, they did an RFP, they didn't have a response. There was a timed limitation with the grant. Are we able to authorize the city manager to go and seek, you know, to make a direct purchase?
Well, you said, you said your charter says that if it's over a thousand, it has to be a competitive bid. Didn't that what you read?
Does it say, does it say without authority?
So, the following expenditures may be made without competitive bidding, so everything else has to be.
But doesn't that say with, with.
Read it again for Dawn, let, read it again if you would.
Upon approval of the city commission, the following expenditures may be made without competitive bidding. So, upon approval. All expenditures, including expenditures for real personal property acquisition not exceeding one thousand dollars.
So that says balance is your, is your threshold, you gotta have competitive bidding?
Right, so. This is under a grant too, so this is a little different.
So my suggestion would be that you, and I know this is difficult, but my suggestion would be that you call and ask for the police to submit a bid, even if it's not one, even if it's hot, submit a bid. And, you know, you're gonna have to have competitive bidding according to what your charter says. That's, that's a really difficult provision to work with.
I, I don't think we interpret it that way because we, we do buy things without competitive bids that cost more than a thousand dollars. I know we do.
Well, what he just read says that even with approval of the commission, you have to have competitive bidding if it's more than a thousand, that's what he just read. Read it slowly, BJ if you don't mind.
Upon approval of the city commission, the following expenditures may be made without competitive bidding. All expenditures, including expenditures for real personal property acquisition not exceeding one thousand dollars. Expenditures for salaries and contracted personal services. Expenditures for work done in the operation of any city department. And expenditures for parts, supplies and materials necessary to make emergency repairs to protect property or preserve the peace in the event of emergencies such as a storm, riot or conflagration.
That's a terrible provision. End of day.
And it says, all of our expenditures shall be authorized in direct to the city commission only upon contract to responsible bidder. Submitting the lowest and best bid according to written specifications previously prescribed thereof and after publication in the newspaper or general circulation one time under notice calling for such bids.
Wow.
Said publication can be not less than ten days before the day of receiving such bids. The city commission shall, shall reserve the right to reject any and all bids submitted pursuant to the section. But it doesn't say what.
But you solicited bids pursuant to specs, nobody bid.
Nobody, right.
It was advertised properly, it was on our website, it's been on our website.
Y'all talked to Lori at Starling, you talked to Flowing Well, and who else did you talk to in, in the, from the Tree and Garden? What other tree companies?
I believe they reached out to Perez.
And Perez, did they reach out to Harper?
I've, I've, I've got the list.
They haven't given you numbers? They wouldn't even give you numbers?
Nobody bid on it. They don't do it, they, we have numbers. Prior to the RFP, the board had direct solicited and got quotes from multiple companies, three or four companies.
I'd say go with, go with your most one. I don't know what you're gonna do with that provision, though. I don't, I think you're violating that every day.
That's what I'm saying, so do you need to authorize him to do anything? Or do you, are you advising he just goes forward and does the best he can?
No, I think you, I mean, you've tried to do the solicitation, you advertised, you did all of that, you got zero response. At this point, I think that he's doing the right thing by coming to you and saying, hey, I tried, I kept getting anybody to respond. And then, in my opinion, you should authorize him to go forward. And if he can, if he can go directly to the person that gave those low, the lowest bid.
Okay, so Mayor, could I make a motion? And the, the way I'm going to word this motion is to authorize him to make purchases from more than one entity. And the reason I'm doing this is because the grant, in the grant that specifies that we are going to buy certain kinds of trees and not, this is the way the nursery business works, not all nurseries. In this amount and this timeframe, we'll be able to supply all of those different tree. He will most likely need to go to either two or three different nurseries. Because we're not buying pipes, we're buying other things. So anyway, so I move, given that the RFP that was advertised by the city manager was not successful, that we authorize the city manager to directly contact vendors, more than one vendor, to purchase the trees required, that are required under the Florida Department of Agriculture grant.
One second, Dawn.
I have a motion in a second. Another concern that I would have, I have family in the tree industry, in the tree business in Pearson. And my concern is that your lowest bid, the quality of the tree that you're getting.
That's, that's my concern as well.
And so that's something that I think all of you need to be aware of, is the quality of the tree that you, that you're getting, because there would be a low bid and.
Just clarify, the grant. To clarify, the grant is very specific about the quality of the tree.
And that quality was captured in the RFP.
In the RFP thing.
Well, but your bid is lowest and best. And I bet you're allowed to take into a lot of considerations to determine what's best.
So that would be, that's just what I would say, is sometimes the lowest is not always the best. So, okay, so we have a proper motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Do we have any comment on this? I know we've got, everybody good with it? Okay?
Thank you.
Would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Cory?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
My apologies.
Okay, so approved. That fire charge is probably gonna go by about five more times tonight.
I was gonna say.
28 miles and then 10 miles on that.
The wrong one.
And Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes.
Not very serious, maybe. We, we are waiting for direction from you. Are you expecting the city commission to be part of the Christmas parade? Or would you like us to?
No, I was going to, I was going to talk to you about that. First thing is a parade marshal. And in speaking to Mary Ann, we've talked, we just talked about that this evening because we have to have a parade marshal. Dave, huh? Yeah, yeah, parade marshal. Dave Frank is just celebrated 45 years. And I think we, if, if everybody would be okay with that, that we possibly, I don't know if he'd be willing to do it, but if we have him as our parade marshal, especially since he would be retired, he's looking to retire. And he's a long time dedicated service to the city. So if everyone is in agreement with that.
That's fine, fine with me, and I was just gonna say, for any reason, Dave doesn't want to do it.
He don't do it.
You're not going to do it. We're not gonna let you do the parade marshal.
I'm not asking him to be the parade marshal. I was gonna suggest Gail from Herman.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Because Herman recently retired, and Gail is a, she's a former paramedic.
I know she did. I'm not sure how she worked with it, but she was.
Yes, so, so anyway, so I'm hoping Dave will be delighted.
Okay, so if anyone's in agreement with that, and then for the, for the parade, of course, everyone, it's December 6th at noon. We're lining up. Dignitaries will be in, the elected officials will be in the South State parking lot. I know Commissioner Burton had said that if we wanted to, I don't know how you, we've been walking.
Right, and we have a banner.
And we have a banner. That, how you want, how you want to do this.
Right. And he has three pages of recommend, well, a tearing page of recommendation about things that the city should do. Hospital, because apparently they're not, they're not meeting to have a best pass tomorrow.
They haven't been providing any, any proposed agenda at all.
Well, that's not what they told me. Several members have come to me and said, they keep getting a call from the, from the city saying that
been meeting because there has not been anything to meet on, and so bringing that to their attention, that this is something, well, they would have to have planning and zoning items, that's because that's the planning and zoning board, so knowing that, and if that's what Mr. Weaver, that it needs to be brought, so thank you for bringing it to their attention. Mr. Martin, would you please make sure that, that his roll call?
I've got it. I'll do it right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
They're gonna meet next Thursday.
They're gonna meet next Thursday?
Yes, ma'am, it's time.
Okay.
And on the previous day, we have actually reached out, passed the deadline to try to get them to give us an agenda, and we have not had any success. So we can't see what we're meeting.
Okay. Do we have, is there anything else? Don, do you have anything?
Bye-bye.
Hi, Commissioner Moore, you move for your term?
Um, no.
My apologies, the clerk handed out, in front of you, there's a binder with minutes. Yes.
I would like to set those minutes for a special meeting, please, prior to November 26th.
Okay.
There's a 23 sets of minutes to be approved.
Um, we need to do it prior to the 26th?
Yes, ma'am, prior to November 26th, please.
Why does that have to be done before November 26th?
The clerk will kindly address the commission this evening, since Commissioner DeVito asked. The clerk will tender her resignation this evening. My last day of employment with the city of Crescent City will be November 26th.
Okay, well, that's a good reason. Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so we need to get those taken care of.
When are we meeting? Next, or after that?
The 25th.
Unless we're moving it out.
Yeah, that's a long day.
I'm available, I'm available next week except for Tuesday.
And, okay, I cannot, I cannot meet Thursday. So, Mayor, you said you're not available Tuesday?
I'm meeting, well, how about Wednesday?
I, I am available Tuesday. I am available Tuesday. Anybody available on Tuesday?
I'm available.
Let's do, let's do 1:30 in the afternoon.
Tuesday, do you need?
Yes. Did that give you enough time?
Yes, ma'am, I'm available.
So 1:30 in the afternoon.
And this is a special meeting?
And this is a special meeting. The only other thing I, I think that I guess that's it. So we have a motion for a term. We just arrived at time.
1:30.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Derek, you guys, we got a little bit of explaining.
Yes, sir. I met with him, and he's, yeah, he's gonna come back.